Dr. Merrick is not going to be here.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to call the regular October meeting to order. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll? Here. Here.
Pat Bradford.
I am here.
G D Justice.
Here.
Dr. Tim Merrick. David Perry.
Here.
And Pete Wildebore.
Present.
All right, we're going to start off with our invocation being given by, and I hope I don't brutalize this, Javi Mendoza, pastor of community engagement at Port City Community Church. This is going to be provided remotely in English and Spanish. And then after that, we will have presentation of colors and national anthem, but I will announce who's doing that when we get done with the invocation, so.
Good evening, my name is Javi Mendoza and I serve as the pastor of community engagement at Port City Community Church. Thank you for allowing me to be with you as we celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month. I will also be translating this prayer into Spanish after I'm done in English. Let us pray. Father, we pause to thank you for the blessings of life. You have given us and how you needed us to be in communion with one another. You have breathed into us breath of life and today we take a moment to ask that you hear our prayers as we seek you and ask for your wisdom and favor upon the children and families in our community. We pray that you intercede in the areas where family reunification is needed. We ask that you provide for the children in the classrooms in tangible ways. We pray that their basic needs are met. We pray for the communities that don't have access to healthy, fresh foods, who might be in areas of town with a food desert. Lord, please make a way for the children and families to have what is needed so that they are able to be fully present in their classrooms. Lord, we pray for all the school board members and their families. Give them the strength to do both their jobs and families' lives well. Thank you for the voice they hold, which has a significant impact on our children's day-to-day lives. Lord, we pray that our all children from every background and culture are considered and cared for when decisions are being made. Lord, I pray for humility for each of them as they learn to navigate and seek first the needs of the children, especially those in rural areas where much more attention is needed. Father, let no one be unaccounted for. Father, may your will be done at all board meetings. Let these men and women be diligent with their decisions that they make. Allow them to hear stories and be moved and convicted in ways that they normally wouldn't be. Let love permeate all areas of their life. Lord, we also pray for the teachers in our city. We are so thankful for all that they do to teach and pour into the life of the young people that are in the classrooms. I pray for wisdom as they navigate difficult circumstances. I pray for patience and perseverance when things are tough. Give them joy in what they are doing. Give them creativity and excitement as we have begun a new school year. Lord, I pray that teachers and faculty at each school will stay unified and work towards a common goal. Thank you that you have gifted them, call them to be right where they are. Help us come around our teachers and support them and love them. Amen. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Javi Mendoza y sirvo como uno de los pastores en la iglesia de Port City Community Church. Oremos. Padre, hacemos una pausa para agradecerte por las bendiciones de la vida que nos has dado y cómo nos dejiste para estar en comunión unos con otros. Padre, has respirado en nosotros el aliento de vida y hoy nos tomamos un momento para pedirle que escuche nuestras oraciones mientras lo buscamos y pidiemos que nos dé sabiduría y favor sobre los niños y las familias de nuestra comunidad. Oramos para que interceda en las áreas donde se necesite la reunificación familiar. Le pidiemos que provea para los niños en los salones de manera tangible. Oramos para que sus necesidades básicas sean satisfechas. Oremos por las comunidades que no tienen acceso a alimentos frescos saludables que podrían estar en áreas de la ciudad con un desierto de alimentos. Señor, por favor, haz un camino para que los niños y las familias tengan lo que se necesite para que puedan estar plenamente presentes en sus salones de clase. Señor, oramos por todos los miembros de la junta escolar y sus familias. Dale la fuerza para hacer bien tanto su trabajo como su vida familiar. Gracias por la voz que tiene, que tiene un impacto significativo en la vida de nuestros niños. Señor, oramos para que todos los niños de todos los orígenes y culturas sean considerados y cuidados cuando se tomen decisiones. Señor, oro por humildad para cada uno de ellos a medida que aprendan a navegar y buscar primero las necesidades de los niños, especialmente aquellos en áreas rurales donde se necesita mucha más atención, padre, que nadie te ha tenido. Padre, que tu voluntad se haga en todas las reuniones de la junta. Que estos hombres y mujeres sean diligentes con las decisiones que tomen. Permítelos escuchar historias y ser conmovidas y acondenadas de manera que normalmente no lo sería. Deja que el amor habite en todas las áreas de sus vidas. Señor, también oramos por las maestras y maestros de la ciudad. Estamos muy agradecidos por todo lo que hacen para enseñar y verte en las vidas de los jóvenes que están en los salones de clase. Oro por sabiduría mientras navegan por circunstancias difíciles. Oro por paciencia y perseverancia cuando las cosas sean difíciles. Dale alegría en todo lo que haga. Señor, oro para que los maestros y los profesores de cada escuela permanezcan unidos y trabajen hacia una meta común. Gracias por el que los has regalado, estás justo donde están. Ayúdanos a acercarnos a nuestros maestros y apoyarlos y amarlos. En tu santo nombre precioso, oramos. Amen.
Presentation of colors will be Ashley High School NJ ROTC under the direction of Lieutenant Colonel Robert Reader and Master Chief Matthew Deschamps with Principal Michael Perez. And then the national anthem will be sung by the Trask Middle School Chorus and y'all are in for a treat with that. And I've asked Ms. Bradford to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to have you guys just your first name and what grade you're in. And we'll go that way and then back up.
My name is Ivy and I'm in eighth grade.
Hey, my name is Carmen and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Avery and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Emma and I'm in eighth grade.
My name's Sebastian, I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Bentley and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Kai and I'm in eighth grade.
Joe, eighth.
My name is Xander and I'm in eighth grade.
My name's Amari and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Eliana and I'm eighth grade.
My name's Izzy and I'm in eighth grade.
My name's Kaylin and I'm in eighth grade.
My name's Hannah and I'm in eighth grade.
My name's Natalie and I'm in eighth grade.
My name's Savannah and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Sydney and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Michael and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Josh, eighth grade.
My name is David Rico, eighth grade.
My name is Lila, I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Hannah and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Natalie and I'm in eighth.
My name is Madison and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Sarah Bishit and I proudly teach eighth grade and sixth and seventh.
My name is Lorenzo McIntosh Jr.
My name is Reese Ingram, I'm also junior.
My name's Leah Tuscany and I'm a sophomore.
My name's Lance Clements and I'm a senior.
My name's Chloe Williams and I'm a junior.
My name's Miguel David Garcia and I'm a sophomore.
My name's Sadie Ingram and I'm a senior.
My name is Mitchell Rain, I'm a junior, uh, senior.
My name's Olivia Albertson, I'm a junior.
My name is Thomas Durant, I am a junior.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Come back often. All right. We'll give these guys a minute. All right. Continuing on, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So moved. Any discussion? Mr. Perry.
Since there was some new information regarding what our, I know we took a vote last Tuesday in regards to our Robert's Rules Training to go with a particular local person, but apparently there was some new information that has been coming in about one of our other options that we didn't have last Tuesday. So I'd like to make a motion that we add a section to reconsider that matter under old business.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Barnhart and then Ms. Justice.
Will the clarification be the time limit for that? I'm sure.
Five minutes?
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Justice.
Yes, you clarified all of that in an email that you sent us this afternoon. That information shouldn't necessarily have been any more pertinent, now this is my opinion, been any more pertinent last Tuesday than it is today, so I'm not sure why we're taking extra time to go through the process again. That's just, you know, I'm hearing.
I would like to say something and then if you're, my concern is we discussed last week that I, so just for clarity for the public, the individual that we determined we were going to go with asked for me to get some comparison pricing. I reached out to the other individuals to get more concise comparison pricing. That one of those groups emailed the entire board rather than just me. So this is what this new information is. That was not the intent, but that is what occurred. As far as putting it on the agenda, I do have concerns because we do have a very full agenda as it is with some very important things that we need to cover. I feel like we've already talked about this, we already talked about the price, we already talked about all of it, but will of the board, so. Ms. Bradford.
I just want to be fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' money and if we don't have to spend $1,000, $1,250, $2,250, then I'd like to. I heard this afternoon through the grapevine that the attorneys had come up with someone who wanted to give us some training, so I'd like them to contribute when that comes around under old business.
Okay, Ms. Justice and then we're going to.
This is like a repeat of what we did last week. This is the same conversation and now we're adding more information. I hate to see this go on and on. When we make decisions and they're well thought out and things are presented, and this really isn't that much information new because in the information that was sent originally, this was around the price that they have given. So here we go again. We need to be more thoughtful on how we spend our time and I just see no reason for it after we've already been through last, during the agenda review, which took some time then.
Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll? This is to add, revisit a discussion on Robert's Rules Training under old business for five minutes. Could you please call the roll?
Ms. Bradford.
Yes.
Mr. Wildebore.
Yes.
Ms. Meissen.
No.
Ms. Barnhart.
Yes.
Ms. Justice.
No.
And Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Four to two. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second. My mic was off. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to zero. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Next up, recognitions.
Good evening, everyone. Now for the fun part that I love to do. We are here to recognize our staff and our students and showcase the great things that they do every single day. So first up, we're going to start with Murray Middle School. So we're proud to recognize that Charles Murray Middle School received the national banner recognition from Special Olympics North Carolina for the 24-25 school year. This distinction honors the school's outstanding effort to provide sports and activities that bring together students with and without intellectual disabilities. As a Special Olympics Unified Champion School, they met rigorous national standards of excellence developed by a national panel of leaders from Special Olympics and the education community. The school is going to receive a banner to proudly display marking its place among a select number of schools nationwide. So we want to celebrate them for creating meaningful opportunities for students to participate, lead, and engage collaboratively. At this time, I'd like to invite them and you up and we're going to have a word from Mrs. Lee to highlight her staff.
So when Ms. Baggy asked me if I would be available to attend the board meeting tonight for this recognition, I said, of course, I wouldn't miss it, but I'm bringing my team with me because it's your guys' hard work, it's your dedication. This team, they go above and beyond to provide a number of inclusive opportunities for all of our students that really celebrate the abilities of all of our students rather than focusing on the disabilities. And I'm so proud of the work that you guys do every day. This, all 878 students in our building appreciate the students that you serve because of the work that you do with them. So thank you all for all that you do. This is very well deserved and I just couldn't be more proud.
All right, let's give them a round of applause. All right, and next but not least, I have another group of amazing people that I'd like to recognize. This evening, we are proud to recognize NHCS's Transportation Maintenance Team for receiving national recognition for their outstanding work and commitment to student safety. So their team was selected as a 2025 Garage Star Team by School Transportation News. It's a nationwide honor recognizing the top school bus maintenance professionals in the country. They were able to, they were selected as one of the top finalists in the nation and as part of the recognition, the team was featured in the August issue of School Transportation News Magazine and they're receiving two tickets to the complimentary registration to attend the School Transportation News Expo. So this honor is a reflection of the team's professionalism, innovation, and commitment to excellence. Fully staffed, the department includes 17 dedicated members with a combined 177 years of experience. They manage 128 yellow school buses and ensure they are safe, well-maintained, and ready to transport students every single day. The team's leadership and collaboration have led to numerous innovations, including advanced safety upgrades, including illuminated stop arm and school bus signage, and the installation of technology that provides real-time diagnostics. They're always looking for forward approach thinking, including cost-saving measures that keep work in-house, improve efficiency, and enhance safety across the district. I would like to invite them up at this time. For those of you who would like to see the magazine article, it's actually linked in today's agenda, so you can go check that out. And that concludes my portion of this event. Good evening. We have one administrative introduction. I'm going to ask Mr. Zachary Gerstenberger to join me up here, please. Mr. Gerstenberger is the new assistant principal at Castle Hain Elementary School. He's our newest hurricane. No, just kidding. Mr. Gerstenberger brings nine years of dedicated teaching experience from Pine Valley Elementary School where he worked with students in grades three through five. His extensive classroom experience has provided him with valuable insight into student learning and development during these critical elementary years. Mr. Gerstenberger holds a Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education and a Master of School Administration, both earned from the University of North Carolina at Wilmington. His combination of classroom expertise and administrative preparation positions him well to support our students, teachers, and families. We're excited to have Mr. Gerstenberger join the Castle Hain Elementary School Leadership Team and look forward to the contributions he will make to the school community. Congratulations.
And I just want to say thank you to the board for the opportunity to serve Castle Hain parents, students, and staff. The last couple of weeks have been amazing already, so I'm looking forward to a successful school year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is teacher voice. All right, next up is Teacher Voice, and we have the honor of having Mr. Benjamin Lord, the new Hanover County School District Wide Teacher of the Year. So come on up.
All right. Good evening. I know your time is valuable and your agenda is full, so I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and share some thoughts. We are now several weeks into what is, for most of our students, teachers, staff, still the early part of a new school year. Those buildings that have been empty over the summer are now fully alive again with our students, the people who give them purpose. It's an exciting time of year. Our routines are settling in, our momentum is building. So given that, I want to take a few minutes just to talk about what I believe makes those places, our public schools, so special and valuable. Those who know me have probably already heard me talk about the idea of education for citizenship. It is a central motivation of mine as a teacher. When I say citizenship, I'm not really talking about any kind of legal status. I'm referring to a set of skills and habits that, if developed, will allow our students to become well-rounded, informed, engaged individuals who are capable of doing the hard work and necessary work of living together in a democratic republic. Now, that sounds like a lofty goal, but it's within reach and nowhere more so than in a public school. Citizenship has been particularly on my mind recently. About 10 days ago, I took the oath of allegiance and became a naturalized U.S. citizen.
Congratulations.
Thank you. A little before that, I had to take the citizenship test. I did pass. As a social studies teacher, it would have been embarrassing if I didn't. But while reviewing, I was reminded of that traditional motto of the United States, still stamped on every nickel, diamond, quarter in our pockets. E pluribus unum, out of many, one. That may be a motto of the United States, but it could just as easily be a motto for our public schools, and I don't think that's a coincidence. There are two main reasons why I think our public schools are the ideal place for students to become citizens. Number one, they are often the place where students take their first step into public life, the first place where the many come together and our students encounter people who do not look, sound, act, or think like them. Citizenship is partly about learning to live and work with those who may not share the same beliefs, perspectives, and life experiences as us. This is a function all public schools serve, but one I think my own, Myrtle Grove Middle School, particularly excels at. It's one of the things I love most about working there. Our students come to us from 11 different elementary schools. We prepare them to enter three out of the four high schools in the county. I teach students who live in million-dollar homes on Masonboro Sound. I teach students who live in public housing on the other side of that parking lot. They come from all works, walks of life. And as we like to say in our school, our school looks like Wilmington. But while it is important, becoming a citizen requires much more than just being around people who are different to us. If that was all it took, we'd be gaining the skills of citizenship by standing in line at the DMV. That leads me to the second reason why public schools develop well-rounded citizens and the second half of that motto. E pluribus unum, out of many, one. Our students may have little in common at first, but they soon come to see themselves as part of a single community with the shared goal of learning. There is nothing more rewarding than seeing a group of students who would never ordinarily have met each other, collaborating on a project in class, deliberating a problem, respectfully sharing with each other opposing perspectives. That, I believe, is the work of citizenship. And I am lucky enough to get to see that happening every single day of the week. In short, as we settle into this new school year, I just wanted to pause and remind us why our public schools hold a special place at the heart of our community. Yes, they are places where students learn reading, writing, and arithmetic, and those things are vitally important. But we shouldn't forget that there is something less measurable but just as essential that they do. They are the places in which our future citizens are nurtured and developed. As a teacher, I'm lucky enough to get to see this process taking place every day as students from across our county come together to learn and grow. And while this may not show up well on a test, it is happening. It is essential, and it is what makes a public school a beautiful place. Thank you.
Well, sir, you get to follow that.
Buckle up, everybody. All right. October is all about celebrating our amazing principals. It is National Principals Month, and I don't even want to think of where my life will be without them. I want to take a moment to say thank you, all the principals in New Hanover County Schools, the work, dedication, and support you do for our staff, our students, our families, and our community is extraordinary. On October 2nd, we celebrate the real MVPs of our schools, our custodians for National Custodian Day. Every building has at least one unsung hero who keeps things sparkling, safe, and clean. For us, a huge thank you to Brenda, Ms. Alicia, and Guillermo, Mr. Donald, and everybody who quietly makes it all happen. You guys are appreciated for the work that you do. All right, big moment here. Forest Hills Elementary School has been recognized as one of the top 10 schools in the state for making major strides in reducing achievement gaps in end-of-grade testing. They are being celebrated tomorrow in Greensboro, and if they get chosen to represent the state, they'll head to the national competition in Colorado in February. The school achieved almost a 10% proficiency gain in the last year. And you'll hear more about that data shortly when Ms. Dr. Murray gives her overview of testing and accountability results. So, Ms. May, Principal of Castle Hain back there. Wave, give us a wave. Zach, give us a wave. Castle Hain has been selected for the 2026 Arbor Day Tree Planting. New Hanover County Schools is partnering with Cape Fear Tree Alliance to plant a young tree at Castle Hain, a legacy that's going to help grow alongside our students. Only one school gets the honor every year, so congrats to Castle Hain for snagging this opportunity. Also, another opportunity for Wrightsboro Elementary, exciting news from Landfall. Thanks to a collaboration with their PTO, they received notification of a $10,000 grant from the Landfall Foundation to create outdoor areas for students to learn. They'll get the ceremonial check on Thursday, so thank you to the Landfall Foundation for your support, and I can't wait to see what the students will do with that. Join us Wednesday, October 29th, here at the Board of Education Center for a Substitute Teacher Recruitment Fair from 9:00 to 4:00. So come on by if you've got nothing going on and sign up to be a substitute teacher. From September 15th to October 15th, we honor National Hispanic Heritage Month, celebrating the richness, achievements, and culture of our Hispanic community. Tomorrow, October 8th, is National Walk and Roll to School Day, and many of our schools will be strutting, strolling, and rolling their way into school tomorrow. So be careful when you're driving, but we love seeing our schools participate in this yearly event. All right, we are excited to also announce that we have been selected from the New Hanover County Endowment to be awarded a $2.7 million grant to fund up to 14 school-specific specialists. This significant grant will provide targeted support to strengthen instruction, improve student outcomes, and prepare students for post-secondary success. Our primary focus of these specialists will be educator collaboration, including coaching master teachers, delivering high-quality professional development, and building systems to ensure strong core instruction across the district. Recognizing that teaching alone does not always guarantee increased student learning, this initiative will also emphasize maintaining robust structures to meet varied and evolving needs of individual students. This grant represents a major investment in both our students and our educators. We're grateful to the endowment for their contribution to the success of our students, staff, and community. And lastly, I'm putting this in under duress. I want to recognize an important day. National No Beard Day is October 18th. I'll be absent that day because my beard is already rehearsing its Santa Claus debut again, so it's basically already started, it's kind of down to Christmas. Madam Chair, those complete my remarks.
Thank you. Unfortunately, mine are less jovial. This month has been a difficult one for our nation, for our state, and for our community. While I would prefer to report on progress within our district, I am compelled once again to address conduct that undermines the integrity of this board and disrespects the very people we serve. Public discourse, both locally and nationally, has become increasingly hostile, and that toxicity has found its way onto our board, and this is unacceptable. I'm issuing a direct and personal apology to our community. While I often speak on behalf of the board, tonight I speak for myself. I'm appalled by the language and behavior some board members have directed at community members. It is unprofessional, it is unbecoming of public servants, and it is damaging to our district. I cannot control others, but I am accountable for my leadership. In that capacity, I acknowledge my failure to prevent this decline in decorum. Over the past year, I've made every effort to hold this board to a higher standard, to focus on common goals, to engage in respectful debate, and to prioritize our students above all else. Despite those efforts, recent events make it clear that those standards have not been upheld, and that is a failure I take seriously, and for that, I apologize. Leadership demands more than words. Leadership is not about being right, it is about doing right. It requires integrity, accountability, and the courage to confront misconduct even when it is uncomfortable. I've owned my mistakes without excuse or deflection. It is time others do the same. It is deeply troubling that board members have chosen to excuse, justify, or ignore their own inappropriate conduct. This community deserves better, our students deserve better, our staff deserves better. To any member of the public who has been disrespected or mistreated by a board member, I offer a clear and unqualified apology. You should expect professionalism, not hostility, from those elected to serve you. I urge everyone here and everyone listening to reflect seriously on the role they have played in recent events. This is not the time for finger-pointing or rationalizing harmful behavior. Ask yourself, what have I contributed to the division and dysfunction in our district, our county, our state, and our nation? As elected officials and adults, we are the example. If we cannot hold ourselves to the basic standards of civility and accountability, we have no business claiming to serve the best interests of our students. Next up is call to audience. And before we start that, I will remind everyone that in accordance with Policy 2310, the board values community input and is committed to ensuring all voices are heard in a respectful and orderly environment. In accordance with district policy, the following guidelines apply to all speakers. Maintain civility and respect during your remarks. Shouting, harassment, personal attacks, or other disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Direct comments to the board chair, not to individual members directly. Adherence to these guidelines is required. Speakers who violate them may be asked by the chair to rephrase or redirect their comments. Board members may excuse themselves if they feel it is necessary. I turn it over to Board Vice Chair, Ms. Barnhart.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First up, we have Ms. Brittany LaRue.
Good evening. My name is Brittany LaRue, and I'm a proud mom of two children here in New Hanover County. Dr. Barnes, first, I want to congratulate you and your team for leading our county to score higher than the state average in performance metrics. But as we all know, averages don't tell the full story. Behind those numbers are children, some soaring and some struggling. Within those numbers lie significant achievement gaps across our county. While we have some of the top-performing schools in the state, we also have some of the lowest. We can't ignore the differences in opportunity and access across our communities. That's why our continued commitment to building bridges and fostering change so that all our children can succeed is absolutely vital. Early education is where the change begins, so I want to thank you for continuing to expand pre-K classrooms, including at Mary Washington How Pre-K. Even though we didn't receive the full $4 million from the endowment, I'm grateful that the funds that we did receive are being directed where they're most needed, to our lowest-performing schools first. That's the kind of leadership I believe helps close achievement gaps and move us all forward. Now, regarding the proposed changes to Policy Code 2310, if citizens approach this board with civility and respect, why should they not be allowed to address specific members about their comments, votes, or behavior? Currently, all three members of the Curriculum Committee belong to one political party. These members recently voted to remove a book from our schools, a decision that could jeopardize our AP Course accreditation. If we're truly committed to keeping partisan politics out of public education, then representation from the minority party must be part of that committee. Each of you was selected or elected, excuse me, by the people and for the people. With that comes accountability to the people. Allowing direct, respectful comments, it strengthens our community trust, encourages civic engagement, and it shows that even when we disagree, we still care about our children's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Wright? Chris Wright?
I gotta get my old man glasses on. Harvey, just a moment. Good afternoon. My name is Chris Wright. A few days ago, newly-selected board members sided, chiming in on a thread between myself and another party on WECT. I first believed I was chatting with an extreme leftist, and then I learned that this board member was a current sitting board member. During our chat, she said the following, quote, "You only care about your hate for others instead of the lives for all." Quote, "You're lying to cover up your ignorance." Quote, "I'm saying you hate because you are a proud MAGA that is racist, misogynistic, nationalistic." By definition, a person that's a nationalist is a person that has strong beliefs in their own nation and country and supports their interests. Quote, "I have hate feel towards anyone except Christian nationalists. I believe MAGA is a toxic force and is anti-American fascist in nature. I am a hate mongerer." Fascists and racists are, seem to be the go-words when it comes to a certain party. I'm going to have nothing else to say. Yes, as board members, protecting the first amendment right to say these offensive and sometimes silly things. However, being a public servant requires decorum, which this member apparently doesn't have much of. I was in law enforcement for 32 years, and on or off duty, I always represented the sheriff. I couldn't pick and choose who I would and would not serve and protect based on race, gender, nationality, or where they lived. This member's total disdain for the Republican Party or MAGA leads me to wonder, would this same person serve the best interests of a child or parent from a conservative family as saved from a liberal family? This member states online that they are a social justice advocate, fights for equality in public schools, a healthy natural environment, and equality for all people. However, this same member posts-
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Okay.
Nelson Boyer?
As always, I'd like to begin by thanking you all for your service. Later tonight, this board will hear information to on proposed 2026 school bond for New Hanover County. However, I do not have much hope for the bond's success. Frankly, I don't think this board has the focus or leadership necessary to see the process through when we can barely pass an agenda. In reading about the proposed renovation to New Hanover High School, it occurred to me that this majority's true problem is not its governing philosophy. It's that it lacks a governing philosophy at all. This is not a board of vision, it's a board of vibes. The members on this board came into office with ideas and expectations, but not really the slightest idea how to implement them. Some of you came into office talking about how you were going to be laser-focused on improving test scores, yet here we are with seven of 10, with our number of struggling schools going from seven to 10. Most of you came into office with reservations about the former superintendent, yet within a year, you had all agreed to renew his contract, and then, within 10 months of that, got rid of him, terminated it in an embarrassing spectacle that cost our taxpayers $300,000. Some of you came in to stamp out indoctrination and grooming, and when you found out that's not what goes on in New Hanover County schools, you instead turned your attention to flags and family decorations. Your single most important job is to hire a superintendent, and while I believe Dr. Barnes is doing an incredible job, you guys just lucked into that one. You didn't interview one because you're all vibes, no vision. You waste time on petty and personal things. You waste time, a not insignificant amount of time, by the way, on whether a member can address you all by your individual names. Get over yourselves. Give us a forward-looking vision and a- Give us a forward-looking vision and instruct the staff to develop and implement a plan to get there. Without that, this bond will fail, and this board will remain an unserious and unfunny joke.
Thank you. Your time is up. Christina Mercer.
Though I didn't grow up here, New Hanover High School has been special to me for a long time, starting from when I did my student teaching there. As you know, when NHHS was built over a century ago, it was built to be the most advanced high school in the state with all the bells and whistles of the time. And over the last 100-plus years, the school's produced many great graduates and has created many traditions. Sadly, the school building hasn't been able to keep up. Who in 1920 could have envisioned TVs and VCRs, let alone computers and the internet? Or school shootings and other security issues? Or Wilmington's growth and the school built on the outskirts of town now wedged on a too-small lot? There are so many people who shout about keeping Hanover, but I think what they are remembering are the traditions and good times from their high school days versus the building itself. And I don't believe the school should be torn down, but I do believe we need a new one. Every student who has attended Hanover in the last 30 years has been educated in a subpar building because of the belief that in order to honor tradition, the school must remain where it is. Yet, that is not our students' burden to bear. The teens assigned to Hanover deserve a school equal to, if not better, than the other three traditional high schools. However, that cannot happen at its current location. I've thought about this for years. Where is developable land in New Hanover County on 421? Put a new school there that would allow you to pull from the current district and also from overcrowded Laney, especially with the I-140 overpass. The campus could have every academic and extracurricular in one place, something that's been missing for decades. It's important, though, that the name, the mascot, and the colors remain the same. That way, we honor the, that way traditions are honored while our students are given the facility they deserve. It's time to stop pouring money into a building that can never serve our students' needs, honor the past by creating a new facility for the next 100 years.
Stephen Axum.
Good evening. Why do we continue to press month after month for better exclusionary discipline policies for our youngest learners? Well, one reason is that the New Hanover County schools have never been better positioned to revise the short-term suspension policy 4351 and to update the student code of conduct for five, six, and seven-year-olds. Consider this: 57 K-2 students received out-of-school suspensions last year. That represents 0.5% of the total K-5 student population. That's one-half of 1%. Also, the staff have been invited to receive the online reframing behavior training. Based on the current neuroscience research, reframing behavior explains how the brain's stress response system shuts down the prefrontal cortex, or the reasoning part of the brain, while the amygdala, the fight-flight-or-freeze part of the brain, takes over. It's most likely the involuntary, automatic, autonomic response of fight that is misunderstood that gets our youngest learners kicked out of school. Understanding how the nervous system impacts behavior informs the need to change our current discipline policies. Bring together school board members, elementary principals, K-2 teachers, school psychologists, behavioral specialists, K-2 parents, the community partners and advocates to review the research, and then make recommendations to the board for revising the exclusionary discipline practices, that is, suspensions and seclusions in our elementary schools. Let's do this.
E.J. Hamley.
On September 30th, Port City Daily reported that the New Hanover County schools received a grant for $2.7 million from the endowment. It said the grant is intended to, quote, "close achievement gaps, support positive behavior, increase student engagement, improve graduation rates, and create positive learning environments," end quote. Although there are probably specific plans already in place for how that money will be spent, Love Our Children believes the best way to achieve those goals is to invest in our youngest learners. Young children improve their reading and math skills by being in school to receive the academic support they need. They improve their social and emotional skills by being in school to receive the mental health support they need. Young children improve their learning engagement and graduation rates by being in school, with educators and other adults who understand the neuroscience and the impact of the nervous system on behaviors. $2.7 million, that could pay for rehiring teachers, teaching assistants, behavior specialists, school counselors, and social workers in preschools and elementary schools, and it could ensure that every employee was compensated for their participation outside the workday for training in the reframing behavior approach. Investing in our youngest learners creates positive learning environments for all students. Invest in their future. Thank you.
Amanda Rees-Meyer.
Good evening. I'd like to ask you to imagine a five, six, or seven-year-old child, bright, curious, struggling with big emotions. Maybe this child gets angry easily, argues with adults, refuses to follow directions, or blames others when things go wrong. Now, picture that same child in a classroom disrupting learning, not because they want to, but because their nervous system is overwhelmed. Many of our schools, that child is sent out, sometimes suspended, before anyone even pauses to ask why. Then, imagine another child whose frustration has escalated into aggression or serious rule violations at their school. They may be removed from school for safety, but what happens next? What supports will be in place magically when they return? The CDC recently updated its Children's Mental Health Guidance, reminding us that these behaviors can be signs of underlying emotional and behavioral disorders, conditions that can and should be evaluated by school or clinical psychologists. That's why I'm asking that Policy 4351, our short-term suspension policy, include language ensuring that before a five, six, or seven-year-old is suspended, a school administrator consults with a mental health professional to determine whether there is imminent threat of harm and what supports that child needs to succeed. With the right interventions, training for teachers, and access to behavior specialists, we can actually prevent these incidents from occurring in the first place. We can teach emotional regulation. We can equip our staff with strategies to respond effectively and keep children in the classroom. This isn't just about discipline, but dignity, prevention, and hope. Let's lead with these words. Ephesians 4:2 reminds us, "Be humble and gentle, be patient, making allowance for one another's faults because of your love."
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Loretta Stackhouse.
A school board member asks, "Why does Love Our Children speak at every board of an education meeting?" A better question is, "Who on the board speaks for all our youngest students?" Five, six, and seven-year-olds who behave dangerously in school are no less deserving of a public education than the children who follow the rules. Children go to school to learn. Sometimes, they make mistakes. They hurt their friends, or they threaten adults. These are teachable moments. These are opportunities to repair the harm and build a community. What are kids learning when a principal kicked them out of school for one day, or possibly 10 days? The message is, "You're bad. We don't like you. We don't want you here." Look at short-term suspension policy 4351. It states in part, quote, "A student who is placed on a short-term suspension will not be permitted to be on school property or take part in any school function during the period of suspension," end quote. Again, "You're bad. We don't like you. We don't want you here." Revise policy 4351. So, if a five, six, or seven-year-old does something dangerous, they will not receive punishment only, but will receive the help and support they need in school. Thank you.
Peter Rawich.
Three months ago, the Civil Rights Division of the U.S. Department of Justice updated the education page on their website. In the section on "seclusions," they state, quote, "Seclusions can occur in a variety of settings, for example, small padded rooms, utility closets, areas blocked off with gym mats, or empty administrative offices." So, where are the New Hanover County students secluded? It goes on. It says, "Seclusions can occur when a student is not free to leave a room, even if the door is unlocked or ajar. For example, if a staff holds an unlocked door closed or blocks the exit with a gym mat." So, are the doors to our seclusion spaces locked or unlocked? Then it says, "Seclusions can occur in spaces used for timeout, calming down, de-escalation, quiet time, isolation, if the student is alone and not free to leave." So, by what name do you call our seclusion spaces now? We know from past years that almost all the seclusions in the district were in the elementary schools, and that the children being secluded had been identified with disabilities. So, how many children were secluded this past year? The federal government requires that you collect the data, and it can be shared easily without any identifiable information about the schools or the children. So, please, please ask Ms. Barnum about it today. Thank you.
Carlette Grissette.
Good evening. Four years ago, the New Hanover County Board of Education voted to approve resolution in support of the Leandro Plan. At the time, every child calculated that with the Leandro Plan, the New Hanover County school would receive $5.16 million annually, in addition to what the state legislative budgeted for our district. Using the Consumer Price Index average inflation rate between 2021 and today, the annual amount would now be approximately $61.5 million. Imagine how our school district could benefit from receiving $61.5 million every year. Every child in North Carolina said that additional funds could provide 135 more teachers' assistance, 166 more nurses, counselors, and social workers, 144 pre-K slots, and more. The money could be used for improving safety, protection, improving communications, collaborating, and achieving excellence. Being able to hire more teacher assistants, counselors, school workers, enrolling more pre-K children would be a step in the right direction for adding, for ending out-of-school suspension for five and six and seven-year-olds. The Leandro Plan presents the bare minimum of steps state leaders must take to fulfill their Constitution duties. We all owe that money. Support education, and go back and pass the resolution. Thank you.
Barbara Garro.
Good evening. The code of conduct of the Chapel Hill-Carboro City School System acknowledges different levels of child development. In one section, it states, "Aggressive behavior in young children is rarely an intentional act to harm another. Rather, aggressive behavior is often the result of the child's inability to communicate what they want, what they need, and what they don't like." It goes on to say that "special procedures need to be in place when there are threats or violent acts to ensure that all children involved in the incident, including the child that engaged in the violent act, receive immediate attention and care." That means that a staff member will remove the child who engaged in the violent act from the environment to help that child regain a sense of calm so that the staff member can speak to the child about the incident. Also, a staff member will speak to the child or children that have been threatened or harmed to ensure they have an opportunity to talk about the incident and to help them regain a sense of safety. Finally, the parents are contacted and are told about everything that happened, as well as the short-term and long-term plans for preventing similar incidents in the future. Similar language that describes developmentally appropriate responses for five, six, and seven-year-olds should be incorporated into our code of student conduct. Thank you.
Alicia Ugandelli.
Good evening. Love Our Children speaks each month for the youngest learners and their families who can't speak or are afraid to speak at the school board meetings. We believe children do well if they can. When a five-year-old raises their fist to threaten a teacher, it's because they don't have the words or skills to communicate how they're feeling. When a six-year-old threatens a classmate, it's because they don't feel safe, and their stress response has shut down the thinking part of their brains. These are examples of young children who need your support, not your punishments. Some teachers are learning about CHAMP's approach to the dysregulated behavior. In the book, it states, "Removal from class will not work for students who are unable to demonstrate the expected behavior because they don't understand expectations, are unaware they're exhibiting misbehavior, or currently lack skills to demonstrate expected behaviors." To be clear, Love Our Children supports removing a child who disrupts learning, but move them to a different space where they can continue to learn. Don't push them out of school. Revise short-term suspension policy 4351 and update the student code of conduct for five, six, and seven-year-olds. Focus on how they can be supported. They are part of the school community and are just as deserving of an education. Thank you.
Leslie Posey. So sorry, my apologies. Veronica McLaurin-Brown.
Three years ago, our board made a commitment to choose teaching and healing over suspension for children under age eight. Today, after visiting Maryland, corresponding with their state superintendent, and conferencing with state assistant superintendent Mary Gabel, Love Our Children, North Carolina, is more convinced than ever that a better policy is achievable. Maryland's policy shows what happens when commitment is resourced, measured, and implemented with fidelity. Attendance increase, repeat incidents decline, discipline disparities for African-American students and students with disabilities decrease. These outcomes were not accidental. They came from a statute that limits exclusion to extreme cases, requires mental health consultation before removal, mandates in-school supports, and allows up to five days of removal from school to plan interventions to ensure both teacher and student are supported. Our own educators have asked for this kind of change. In the 2024 staff survey, one teacher said, "Take a look at elementary school susp- In the 2024 staff survey, one teacher said, "Take a look at elementary school suspensions. Many are frivolous." Another urge, "Make changes that will inspire educators to do their job." A third was direct, "Get us help. Teachers are not equipped to handle these behaviors." These are not complaints, they are constructive feedback, and the data backs it. Pre-K through second grade suspensions rose by 31% in three years. Maryland's roadmap offers a pathway forward to providing a safer and more productive learning environment. Adopt it. Listen to our teachers. Measure what matters. Fun what works. A better policy is achievable. A better policy is achievable.
Now Leslie Posey. Sorry about that.
Good evening. Several people have been complaining recently that our students are not being taught civics. The Northern Carolina Standard Course of Study describes the expectations of students' civics knowledge at each grade level. These are the requirements for civics in seventh grade, sorry, second grade, and part of high school. I've edited the high schools considerably for time restraints. Second grade, the students will understand how freedom, equality, and democracy contribute to the government of America. They will compare the structure and function of the three branches of government and summarize the role of government in protecting freedom and equality of individuals and groups. High school, students will explain how legislation, policy, and judicial rulings reflect changing norms and values in the United States. They will show they understand how these changes influence legislation, policy, and judicial decisions. Students will show they understand how diverse American beliefs and values concerning freedom, equality, and justice have changed and transformed government policies and practices. They will explore how changes in the social and cultural values and movements in the United States have led to changes in laws, policy, and judicial decisions. They will be familiar with the 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendments, laws concerning suffrage, prohibition, slavery, segregation, the Equal Rights Amendment, immigration, the Patriot Act, Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, Religious Freedom Restoration Act, and the Individuals with Disabilities Act, among many others. Students will study over 30 major judicial rulings, including the Scobis Trial, Plessy versus Ferguson, Brown versus the Board of Education, the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and the Environmental Protection Act. As you can see, our children are receiving thorough, age-appropriate civics instruction at all levels. Thank you.
Sandy Isles.
Tonight, I was going to reinterpret the hate speech spoken at August board meeting. Instead, I'm going to change my course. Ms. Mason, thank you for apologizing to the community. We've heard incredibly hateful rhetoric from this board, specifically the language directed towards our LGBTQ community. This language is dangerous and vile. I'm also appalled that hate speech has been allowed at this meeting while my own speech has been restricted. Our board has a responsibility to be content neutral, and I'm concerned that your attorneys have not publicly stressed this requirement as it is the foundation of our First Amendment. I understand that criticism does not feel good, but I've always discussed issues and actions and have never made personal attacks, yet my speech is restricted while hate speech is allowed. Last month, I followed the board rules, and I believe the board chair knows this. The fact that the board has now changed the rules is evidence that I followed them, yet my time was still cut. I do believe this board owes me an apology for infringing on my free speech. I'm also very concerned that this board has not remained content neutral in the creation and enforcement of their rules and has used their rules to silence opposing voices such as mine. There appears to be different rules for hate speech versus fair criticism of board members. Madam Chair, I'd like to end by addressing the behavior of the colleague to your far-left, the lady with the white hair. She cannot silence speech simply because it is critical of her. I find it absolutely appalling that she demands protection from harsh criticism and has expressed more outrage and taken more action towards me than she has about the hate speech targeting our students and staff. It is shameful that she continues to prioritize her own comfort over the safety of our kids.
Katie Gates.
The last couple of times I spoke, I suggested the board might consider citizenship initiatives that foster character and creativity, pure-led service, patriotism, morality, virtue, civics, and how important the concept of e Pluribus Unum is to our nation and to our schools. By promoting character development and citizenship, we could positively impact district issues like truancy, apathy, burnout, and academic mediocrity. Well, it turns out that NC State Law 115(c)-47 from 2023 addresses these things, so my direction now shifts from suggestion to question. Are we in compliance, and how can the community assist in helping bring citizenship values to New Hanover County schools? Article 8 Character Education states that each local Board of Education shall develop and implement a character education instruction with input from the local community. The instruction shall be incorporated into the standard curriculum and should address the following traits: courage, good judgment, integrity, kindness, perseverance, self-discipline, respect for school personnel, responsibility for school safety, service to others, good citizenship, obeying the laws of the nation and this state, abiding by school rules, and understanding the rights and responsibilities of a member of the American Republic. And in Section 29D, the law outlines student rights to engage in prayer and religious activity. And lastly, the law allows for the posting of the Ten Commandments and historical founding documents in schools. I'll send an email with the specifics of this information and strongly encourage you all to review our state law compliance and consider the alignment of this with your strategic plan goals of teacher and student support.
Renegade Cherokee.
Greetings and salutations to the New Hanover County Board of Education. I come to you from this August Assembly, and I apologize to one of the members of this Assembly and the churlish remarks made in reference to that person. Those comments were mean-spirited. They weren't coming from a place of edification, they were coming more from a place of just flippancy and just tit-for-tat. Like what Mother used to always say, "Every word doesn't require an answer." My mother would be ashamed of me if she was still alive today because I did not pay heed to what she taught me so long ago. So for those that flippant and churlish remark to a member of this August Assembly, I apologize to the board for my comment directed toward that member. I am truly sorry, I am truly penitent, and I will never again address a member of this board directly. Whether I am challenged by a member of this board or not, I will keep silent and keep it moving and obey the quorum that's set forth. Again, my humblest apologies, I am penitent, and I am truly sorry. Cela.
Karen Clark.
Good evening, Dr. Burns and Board. I pray that the Father of Glory would impart to you the riches of the Spirit of Wisdom and the Spirit of Revelation, that you love Wisdom, that Revelation guides you. I pray you will continually experience the immeasurable greatness of God's power made available to you through faith. Then your lives will display this immense power as it works through you, that you are the one who dissolves mountains. By constantly using your faith, the life of Christ will be released deep inside you, and the resting place of His love will become the very source and root of your life. Then you will be empowered to discover the great magnitude of the astonishing love of Christ in all its dimensions. How deeply intimate and far-reaching is His love, how enduring and inclusive, endless love beyond measurement that transcends our understanding. This extravagant love pours into you until you are filled to overflowing with the fullness of God. He will achieve infinitely more than your greatest request, your most unbelievable dream, and exceed your wildest imagination. He will outdo them all. May faith and hope arise. I bless you to have Christ formed in you, to see yourself as a dearly loved son or daughter of God known by love. I release you to be all that God created you to be, in Jesus' name.
Fran Downey.
Hi. Last time I was here, I came up kind of spur of the moment, and it was in reference to House Bill 805. And due to very good response from Superintendent and also from Dawn, we've started now to try and get something together from volunteers to help with this really arduous task that was kind of laid on the teachers. Today, one classroom, seven volunteer hours, and we knew what we were doing, and we had a plan, and we had all the equipment in place. We got one room done, just to give you an idea of how time-consuming the task is. What it really came to say is that in being in the classroom, being quiet, just watching, I, there's not enough adjectives to, positive adjectives, to tell you how amazing the teachers and their support staff are. Also, they need resources. They need, they need less coming down on them. Oh, they can take care of this. Oh, they can take care of this. The fact that this was dropped on them is insane. They're busy every second of the day, and they, they do it with joy, they do it with amazing professionalism. It's just with warmth, and you just can't even imagine doing their job, quite honestly. If you get a chance, go in and spend, go in and scan for seven hours, and you'll get a clue as to what they do and how they do it. Just real quickly, just the Leandro Project and the Love Our Children. Understand, without resources, the teachers cannot implement anything more than they're doing. So please consider resourcing our teachers financially and every other way. Thanks.
Madam Chair, that concludes the call to audience.
All right, board members, we're going to have a five-minute break. Please be prompt in returning. Five-minute break.
We are back. Next up on our agenda is the New Hanover County Schools Accountability Presentation by Dr. Elizabeth Murray.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me a few minutes to
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me a few minutes to share some of the highlights of the '24-'25 academic school year in terms of accountability as it relates to school performance grades and growth. No, I think I turned it off. I don't know.
She broke it.
Wow, we are working on that. Yep, there we go. I do want -- there we are. Thank you. I do want to share that the data that we are sharing this evening comes directly from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. All of the data is available on the website, and should anyone want to review that, it is publicly available. We're going to spend a few minutes talking about the accountability model, the academic results, school performance grades, and then a few of our highlights from this past school year. The Every Student Succeeds Act Accountability Model for North Carolina includes that schools get school performance grades ranked A through F, A, B, C, D, F, based on a formula that includes 80% of achievement data, which is our end-of-grade and end-of-course test scores for elementary and middle school. And in the high schools, they have a few other components that we'll talk about when we get to that. So 80% is achievement, and then 20% is growth. And when we talk about growth, we're talking about whether or not a student showed a year's worth of learning for a year's worth of instruction. And so that factors in 20%. We often are asked how often the state updates this model. This particular model has been in place since 1415, and you will hear legislators and folks that work for the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and the North Carolina School Board talk about changes that are needed. But as we sit this year, '24-'25, and as we know, moving into '25-'26, the model will remain the same. So the accountability measures in terms of achievement for elementary and middle schools includes our end-of-grade test in reading, math, and fifth and eighth grade science, as well as any students or scores that are gained in the middle schools by students taking Math I. And then it also includes our English learner progress, which is measured through our WEDA Access Assessment. High schools, however, have a different model. It does include their end-of-course tests, Math I, English II, Biology, and Math III. It does also include the English learner progress, but in addition, we also factor in the ACT scores, the Work Keys scores, math course rigor, and the cohort graduation rate. So the high school model is more in-depth and involved.
Easily complex is the word you were looking for.
Indeed. When we talk about performance, for North Carolina, we have four achievement levels. We have achievement levels three, four, and five, which are considered proficient. And then we have below level three is just simply non-proficient. A lot of us remember when we had level one and level two. Now, that is just considered non-proficient, and that is what the state uses to calculate the school performance grades. And growth is measured in terms of exceeding growth, meeting the expectation, or not meeting the expectation. So it's on a linear range, and obviously, the further right you go in the range, the higher the growth is, meaning students are accelerating at more than a year's worth of progress for a year's worth of being in school. So as we look at how we compare to the state and other districts around us, we continue to outperform the state in almost all of the measures. And very similar, the trends that we are seeing in New Hanover County Schools, very similar to what other districts are seeing and what is happening at the state level. When we look at the proficiency for reading, we do see that there's little increase at the state and flat for New Hanover County Schools. And that is a concern that the state shares with us, especially in third grade. In math, we are on pace with the state. We continue to increase our math proficiency in grades three through eight. Math I is an area that New Hanover County Schools has chosen to focus on this academic year. As we know, well, Math I is the -- this measure comes from the students that take Math I in high school. So if students take Math I in middle school, that grade or proficiency marker counts for the middle school. So when we're looking at this metric, we're talking about just the students that take Math I at the high school level. Something to note about science, this past year, '24-'25, the state implemented new science standards, therefore, we had a new test. So inasmuch as I have shared previous data, it really is not comparable. We see a drop for us, the state sees the same drop. What we know about this is as teachers learn the new standards and are more familiar with teaching those standards, these grades and proficiency rates will rebound. The four-year cohort graduation rate, we -- after a little dip in '23-'24, we are again on the increase. So we are very, very proud of our graduation rate, and again, something that the district is focused on this year, as in every year, but this year specifically as we implement some different strategies in identifying some of our students earlier in their high school careers who may be at risk. When we look at ourselves compared to the 12 largest districts in the state, we are in the top 25% in almost every area. Here, I've highlighted EOG subjects, which are middle and elementary school, and EOC subjects. And then the ACT. The ACT is an assessment that all 11th graders in the state of North Carolina take. And this year, the minimum score for students to receive to be considered proficient is the score that is needed to be accepted to a UNC system, college, or university, and that is a composite score of 17. Among the largest districts in the state, we are third, we are 15th in the entire state of North Carolina. So we are very pleased with that rate. I don't have it in this presentation, but we're also very pleased with our assessment of career readiness, which is the Work Keys Assessment. And that is an assessment that students take if they have taken a certain number and level of career and technical education courses, and they can actually receive credentials that allow them to go into the workforce and show that they are prepared for more than an entry-level position. So we do very well with Work Keys as well. Surrounding districts, again, we are consistently in the top three or four. Oh, I didn't move the slide, sorry. There we go. We are consistently the top one or two in our surrounding areas. And then as we move out of just thinking about test scores into school performance grades, which again include the 80% for proficiency and the 20% for the growth. In New Hanover County Schools, 75% of our schools are at a rate or a school performance grade of an A, B, or C. So 75% of New Hanover County Schools, which outperforms the state, the state's rate is And again, I didn't include it in here, but I was asked to, and I didn't get it in there on time. Charter schools in our areas, we have six charter schools in our area that we monitor and compare with. There are only two charter schools in our area that received a school performance grade of B. None received a school performance grade of A. Two received Bs, and then the others were Cs and Ds. So again, comparing with our charters in the area, we are outperforming the charters in the area as well. Growth, that is the measure that doesn't receive a lot of attention and is an anomaly to a lot of people, but that's where we really look at how students are progressing with their learning. Students can be proficient without showing academic growth. So we're very, very in tune to making sure all students are showing a year's worth of growth for a year's worth of instruction. What we see here is, again, 75% of New Hanover County Schools met or exceeded the growth expectation, and that is important because as growth improves, proficiency improves. Students who continue to work and exceed at more than a year's rate are working towards becoming proficient. So we do very much focus on our EVOs growth metrics. The state is at 73% for met or exceeded, and again, New Hanover County Schools is at I'm actually going to skip this slide because it doesn't contain all the correct schools, but in page -- on page 12 in your book, the information there is correct in the schools that exceeded growth, which included Carolina Beach, Murray Middle School, Anderson Elementary School, the International School at Gregory, Bellamy, Murrayville, Ogden, Cottington, Masonboro Elementary, Sea Tech, Winter Park, and Wrightsville Beach. So those are all of our schools that exceeded academic growth this past school year. So some of the takeaways and some of the highlights for New Hanover County Schools from this previous year is that New Hanover County Schools ranks 18th among 115 public school units in the state in terms of proficiency on all end-of-grade and end-of-course tests. We rank 15th in the state in terms of our students' preparedness for college. We had 30 schools that met or exceeded growth, and 75% of our schools have a school performance grade of A, B, or C. That's what I have to share with you this evening. Are there questions about any of the data?
Ms. Bradford?
I do. I will. I will include it. In fact, I'll include it in this presentation when I make that correction to the slide about the schools that exceeded growth. I'll include that slide, absolutely.
Ms. Barnhart?
Thank you. I very much appreciate this presentation. I want to say thank you to all of our staff. I know how hard you are working to grow our students. One of the things and the challenges that feedback form teachers is when we receive students who are below grade level, and their expectation is to teach the standard of grade, whatever they're teaching, however, they first have to pull up a child from two grade levels behind and grade level behind. And so what I would be interested in diving into further, maybe not right now, we could probably talk for hours, but diving into further to see where students started out who were below grade level and to see how far they came, even if they did not meet proficiency, because that is also a sign of closing the gap. But with the grades of how we show progress, of growth, of either growth or proficient, that's not going to be captured in that. And so I'd love to tease that out a little bit more and be able to show that. And the other question, and I think you might be able to highlight this, is how are we closing the gap with our highest learners? Because I know we have some schools that did that very well, and so I don't know if that's in my big book of reports that I get to look through, but...
Yes, and you will see in your book that there is a page for each school. I do want to go back to the piece about thinking about where students began and where they end. That is the growth measure in and of itself, and it is so very important. And again, it's only 20% of a school's performance grade. And when we look at our schools that are exceeding growth, their school performance grade may not be, you know, an A through C, however, their students are growing at a rate that is going to help them continue to move towards that proficiency. And I actually do have some examples of some of the schools that have a very high growth rate. One that I would love to highlight is Gregory exceeded growth at an index of almost three. So those students are progressing. The expectation is just -- is zero. So if you think about zero is the expectation, those students are accelerated at a rate of three. So those are the kinds of metrics that we definitely want to look at and to monitor. And that is something that my office helps with in terms of, we only get that measure. We just got it, in fact, in September, so we get it a little bit delayed in the school year. However, once we have it, that's something we can work towards and identify those students that made significant growth. How do we continue that progress? And then those that need some additional assistance in moving that needle forward. Closing the gap, what was the second question, closing the gap in our high-performing schools? So what is interesting is, and we are glad to see this, in some of our higher-performing schools, those schools also exceeded growth, which is also important to recognize. Students that often are high flyers, maybe in the top 5%, they're going to be proficient. However, they don't always show growth, and so we often hear that students at the high end cannot grow any higher than they can. And so we definitely look for that. I don't know if anybody on senior staff wants to specifically talk about strategies that we're using to close those gaps, or we can do that at another time.
So for the higher-achieving students, at the school level, which we would not tease out here, but at the school level, the administrators in their school-level EVOs data have the opportunity to look at those subgroups of children. So back to a higher-performing school, they can look and see how their AIG children performed as far as growth, and it teases that out as well for met, not met, or exceeded growth. So you can look and see if your AIG children are exceeding growth expectations in individual schools, which is a tool that principals look at and disaggregate, to then go back and work with not only the AIG teachers for making sure that we're differentiating, we are... work with not only the AIG teachers for making sure that we're differentiating, we are making sure that we're using higher-order thinking skills and providing those opportunities for more in-depth learning of grade-level standards so that they can think more deeply and have a more thorough understanding. But in addition to that, they also work at the regular classroom teachers because like for instance, in elementary school, they're only with the AIG teacher a small amount of the time, right? And especially there's one teacher and maybe a lot of children to be served, so they also work to build that collective efficacy throughout the school so that the regular classroom teachers can also have the skills to be able to differentiate in those classrooms so that the children are having that opportunity to grow and develop more deeply based on their pace.
So we have about two minutes and three people that want to talk, so if you could keep it as brief as possible. Mr. Perry?
Yes, so it seems from the first look that the Math One High School is an area of concern, but then you said during your thing that that only indicates the high school, it doesn't indicate our students that may be taking Math One in middle school. How is our, is the percentage of our students who are taking it in high school versus middle school about the same as it is statewide?
Yes. We may be a little higher. Statewide, it's about twenty-five percent. We are maybe twenty-seven percent.
Thank you.
Mr. Wildewar?
Thank you again for this, and I'll be very brief, but looking at the school I taught at for almost twenty years, on page forty-four, and can you help us understand the impact of, you know, I guess the science scores, because this particular school met expected growth in reading, met expected growth in math, but didn't make expected growth as a school. So they made the score in math, they made the score in reading, but they didn't make it overall. So is that all science, or how did that?
The formula for how the state calculates growth, and they use SAS, which is a large, largest statistical company in the United States, and they calculate this. So it very much depends on the length of time a student was enrolled in the school, so not all students count in each of the variables. A student has to be enrolled at least half of the year plus one day. And so sometimes those factor into the variables. Also, things that factor in are students that are first or second-year multi-language learners. They do not factor in their first year in growth or in proficiency, and then in the second year, they factor in only in growth. So you've got some movement in how that happens. And then when you put all the data together, it's kind of like the law of large numbers, when you isolate the two areas and tease that out, which is very important, you have students that may meet growth in reading and not meet growth in math. So it's just a matter of the mathematics that is involved with that.
Ms. Bradford, super quick.
Where does this live online so that parents and community can find it?
It does live online, certainly on my, on the testing and accountability.
Fascinating, it's really fascinating.
Homepage, but we also make sure every school's individual page is linked to their homepage.
But is this in its entirety available online?
Yes.
Where does it live, Anita?
Just...
It's fascinating.
So I don't know if everybody heard that, it's under testing and accountability. Dr. Burns?
Yeah, and as you'll see from the data, I talked to you guys at the Agenda Review about our strategic plan and our initiatives. Two of our initiatives are focusing intently on Math One in the high school, on third-grade reading and graduation rate. I really do feel like the year before, our biology scores were some of the highest in the state, and the anomaly of the testing, I really think, is going to rebound itself. So while we're working on that, it is not a cause, I think, for the level of concern that we're really focusing in on those areas that are sort of chronically issues for us. Math One, third-grade reading, graduation rate. Thank you.
Oh, what, go ahead, let's touch on that, shall we?
Let's not.
The testing fiasco, I think, I think there is something to be said about that, and we tried to advocate to have our schools held harmless. These students had to retake this test, so that is also an element of the data that will not be reflected, and thank you again for the restart of the test that you had to do till the wee hours of the night to do that. But we would be remiss if we did not also mention that. We tried to advocate to DPI to hold harmless, we did not receive that. So that is also a frustration and anger that a lot of staff and students feel from this, so I want to acknowledge that as well.
They did, and that was a statewide issue, it was not a New Hanover County School issue.
Absolutely.
We often are asked how often technological issues impact our testing. Very rarely, very rarely. And yes, that was a source of frustration for everyone this past year.
Absolutely. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, discipline data. Ms. Barnum?
Good evening. So let's click on the first one. So I wanted to provide you with an update on our discipline data summary as reported to the Department of Public Instruction for the school year twenty-four, twenty-five. And again, this is the information that we submitted through Power School, our student information system, and of course, moving forward, we will be pulling this information through Infinite Campus. As you can see, the incidents entered into Power School, and this includes office discipline referrals and other documentation efforts. So incidents entered into Power School, twenty thousand seven hundred and thirty-three, and I've made a notation on these, how many of those correlate to kindergarten, first or second-grade students?
Okay.
So you see two thousand six hundred and three. In-school suspension assignments, four thousand five hundred and thirty. You see the K through two is sixty-one. Short-term suspension assignments, again, these are assignments, not number of students, is two thousand four hundred and twenty-eight, and of K-two, you see that's ninety-three. The reportable offenses, one hundred fifty-two. Five of those are attributed to kindergarten, first, and second-grade students. And again, I'm going to show you the trends on the, on the next chart. But if you will recall, those reportable offenses are those most serious offenses that are required to be reported to law enforcement per state law.
Can you list those? Can you describe them?
Yeah, I can tell you those. Those include, the most serious offenses are assault involving a weapon, and I can also send you in your updates, the full list. There are sixteen of those. Assault involving a weapon, assault resulting in injury, homicide, indecent liberties with a minor, kidnapping, rape, robbery with a dangerous weapon, sexual assault battery, sexual offense, assault on school personnel, bomb threat, burning of a school building, possession of a firearm or explosive, possession of a weapon that's not a firearm or explosive, possession of alcohol beverage, and then possession of other controlled substance. The disciplinary reassignments to J.C. Rowe, again, those are only for middle school and high school students, and those are for students who have been investigated for an offense that could result in a longer-term out-of-school suspension, but those are disciplinary reassignment to ensure that they stay in school and provided a very structured environment for them to continue their education. That is at one hundred and twenty-six. And long-term suspensions, true long-term suspensions are a total of four. So if we go to the next, we'll give you a three-year comparison, and this is the best part of the information, because you can see our trending direction. So the first, incidents entered into Power School, you can see the data from school year twenty-two, twenty-three, at twenty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-four. You see twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four thousand two ninety-eight. That was an increase of twelve percent from that one year to the next. And then the school year twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty thousand seven hundred and thirty-three, which is a decrease of fifteen percent from that school year to this one, to this past. In-school suspension, overall, you can see those numbers, I won't read those to you. From twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, saw a three percent reduction and another four percent as a result of twenty-four, twenty-five. Short-term suspension assignments, from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, you know, pretty much the same, four difference, so not a percentage difference. The reduction into twenty-four, twenty-five was twenty-two percent. Reportable offenses have decreased by six percent each year over the past couple of years. Disciplinary reassignments did increase. From twenty-two, twenty-three, they decreased five percent, but from twenty-three, twenty-four into last school year, increased by twelve percent. So that's, that's an increase in the number of students that were disciplinarily reassigned but continuing their education. And then long-term suspensions from, in twenty-two, twenty-three, and again, these are really small numbers, so the percentage changes quite drastically from two, an increase to four, and then maintained at four. I don't know if you have any additional questions or any...
Mr. Perry?
Thank you for your putting this together. This is the, I'm sure it probably took some work. One of the, the only thing I wanted to add to this is several months ago, I requested, which I don't think I really received an answer on, and plus, we're going from Power School to Infinite Campus, anyway, I'm assuming this data is going there too. But at the same time, I'd like it so that possibly, if it's technically feasible and not too difficult to do, like, it would be nice if somebody can come to our website and make their own report out of this data by getting, not, without any personally identifiable information, and be able to run these reports so that a lot of our children people can't be here every month complaining about it. So, you know, it would be nice if we could automate this process so people, so we can be as transparent as we can. So I'm just, I encourage you to look into that and see if we can do something in that line, so, but I thank you for your work, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Justice?
Yeah, how many of these are bus, are bus disciplinary situations, including this data?
The only ones that would be included would be in the first box, the incidents entered into Power School.
Uh-huh.
So if it's a bus referral, it would be entered there, and if it results in an in-school suspension, it would be in that data, and if it results in an out-of-school suspension, it would be in the short-term data. Other than that, it wouldn't necessarily be reflected. But if you are interested in how much of, how much of these are related to bus referrals, I can get that data pulled out.
Okay.
In other words, it doesn't include a bus suspension. If you're suspended off the bus, that's not on here.
Okay, and that's a separate situation.
Right, right.
Absolutely.
Yes. So if you're only suspended from the bus and not suspended from the school day, those are not counted as school day suspensions.
Wow, you know, often that turns into school day because parents have no...
It might turn into, to an absence, but it wouldn't be a suspension.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's just...
Yes, and I can offer a clarifier unless you have a related services of transportation on an IEP, but that's a little too specific.
Ms. Barnhart?
Thank you, I have two questions. One, I'm assuming that the data does not show the repeat offenders in this, it just shows the number of offenses, not whether or not an individual has multiple long-term suspensions, for example.
Right, right. This is, this is the specific data that is reported into DPI and how DPI reports that back out.
Thank you, and then for the disciplinary reassignments, the increase to one twenty-six, what I'd like to see, I know that there's been a huge focus on making sure they have credit recovery over at J.C. Rowe Academy, so I'd like to see the success of those students because a few years back, we changed the disciplinary reassignments to not be short-term suspension, it had to be a longer, either six-month or a year time that they would be at J.C. Rowe consistently, because what we saw was if you got a short-term suspension, you didn't show up and you missed two to three weeks of school. So I would like, I would be curious about that success rate of that one twenty-six number to talk a little bit more about that. Thank you.
Dr. Burns? Oh, okay. Ms. Bradford, did you have a question?
And mine was echoes, Ms. Barnhart, I wanted to know more specifics about the reassignments to J.C. Rowe.
Okay. And I would like to speak a little bit to that. At the beginning of this school year, Principal Carnegie and I have been communicating pretty consistently about the number of parents who have requested their student return because of the amount of success in, in being able to recover lost credits from prior failures and being on a stronger track toward graduating on time.
And if I'm...
I'll be excited to bring that information.
Thank you.
I mean, yay to our J.C. Rowe Academy.
Right.
Teachers, like cheers and awesomeness for them. Ms. Justice?
Yeah, is there a three-year trend on K through second-grade suspensions?
Specifically just kindergarten through second? I'm sure we can, we can pull something together.
Could you do that, please? Thank you.
All right, Dr. Burns?
I did pull some data on that today, though.
Oh.
Julie and I were talking today, and I asked her, we are three weeks away from the nine-week break, so we are three weeks away from a fourth way through the school year, and our K-two suspension numbers at this point are at six? Six. So this year has been going well.
Oh, good.
In that regard, there's been only six incidents.
You mean, all year, there's only been six?
Correct.
All year?
For K-two students.
Six.
I think it's important to recognize, however, just as a caveat, part of that is due to what we try to do to make sure that that is never going to be our first choice for the kid.
Absolutely.
So sometimes these kids are working their way through support systems at the school level, anyway, but I was pleased to know that number, so thank you for checking that out specifically.
We have one minute left, Ms. Justice.
I think we had this conversation a few minutes ago, in all sincerity, if we had more support in the classroom, and that does not come from us, would that decrease those numbers even more, would you say?
Well, it, it depends. So of course, we would have less students leaving the classroom if there were, you know, other options and other resources for de-escalation in the classroom, but very often, you know, we need to leave to be able to restore instructional stability in the classroom. But additional supports in our schools would not go unutilized.
Well said.
Any other questions? We are at time for that. Thank you, Ms. Barnum.
Thank you.
All right, next up is consensus items. I will entertain a motion to approve all consensus items.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Next up is policy, so I'm going to turn it over to our policy chair.
Well, that's me.
That's you, sir.
That's me, yes. Well, we have a lot of policies here, we discussed them briefly at the Agenda Review, obviously, the policy committee brought them forth too, and so I will make a motion, unless somebody has any that they want to pull off, that we approve all the policies listed in policy consensus.
Second?
All right, I did reach out to Dr. Merrick, who is unable to be here tonight, and I wanted to make sure I shared his thoughts on policies, and then I will go to other members who have commentary. So first up, I'm just going to go through the policies and the concerns that he had. Policy forty-one, fifty, he said there's confusion on this and how we voted on it last time, I believe. The superintendent has discussed not only that some schools require us to weigh admission qualifications, but also to close achievement gaps. It's in the best interest of the district to be able to weigh admissions to close these gaps. I may be misinterpreting the superintendent, but I do believe it is an option best left to the district, not the board. It occurs here that the board is attempting to protect a class that needs no protection. This is the very difference between equality and equity, just my opinion. Leave these types of decisions to the professionals who we entrust with the growth of our district. His next one was twenty-two, thirty. Good government, governance, in my view, would codify having minority party representation on all board committees and councils that include more than one board member. Presently, the Finance, Bond, and Capital Committee, as well as the curriculum, do not have minority party representation. And twenty-three, thirty-five, he indicates the phrase "as promptly as possible" is too vague. Good policy does not leave open to subjective interpretation. I would like to see, and it comports with open meetings laws, that we make our agendas viewable to the public at the same time they are viewable to the board. We are a public board, and we do not have the right to keep anything from the public save for student and personnel information. And that was Dr. Merrick's commentary. I know there was two hands already, so I'm going to go Mr. Perry, and then Ms. Bradford and Ms. Justice. and Ms. Justice.
I'd just like to pull 4150, that's the only one I.
Oh, okay. Mr. Perry wants to pull 4150. Okay. Ms. Bradford?
Just a couple comments, not to what the policy says, but we're considering policy 2230 board committees, and I received a parliamentary response to the question that was posed at the meeting last Tuesday about ad hoc committees. The parliamentary response was that it is covered not only in our policy, but it's covered by Robert's Rules of Order, that how that committee had been formed was proper. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. If they want to see the full, the short answer is yes. Policy code 2230 explicitly provides for a committee to form subcommittees. No other provision contradicts this, and Robert's Rules permits this also. So I wanted to put that little chatter to, to rest, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Justice?
Yeah, Mr., my colleague to the right already pulled 4150. I would like to see also 2230 polled, actually in relationship to what Ms. Bradford was just referring to, asked to a doctor, well, I'm missing a colleague. I'm not sure if I can say his name. I'm sorry. His concerns.
So 4150 and 2230 are the ones that are being polled?
Well, also, 2335, since he had that concern, we could, I think we should discuss that.
Okay, so we have 4150, 2230, and 2335 polled. That leaves 1310, 3210, 3320, 3510, 3620, 4120, 4318, 5024, 5070, 6125, 6340, 7100, and 7820.
Aye.
Thanks.
Can we make a motion to pass all those?
So there was a motion to approve policies, so, and a second, so we're only focusing on those that I just listed. I'm not listing them again, I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to zero. All right, let's go from the top. We'll go to school assignment. Mr. Perry, you were the one that pulled that.
Yes, so I want to thank the policy committee, even in my absence, for adopting a lot of the additional changes that we brought in here. Before, we had discussed the lottery assignment when it came to our year-round schools, and, but there was, the language was inconsistent, because our innovative high school programs are not really based off a lottery at all, so it need, this language needed some changing. So I'm happy we, we did that. The, so what's before us, I think, a lot of it in Section 2, that I am all for, but my original language, as far as Part 3, I think what's in there right now, that developing an admissions rubric for entry into these programs, et cetera, that's all fine, but what was left out from my original version of, of what I had proposed was this language here, which, and I will read it after what's already in there. Each qualified student who can individually demonstrate that they would benefit from these programs should be granted an equal opportunity for admissions to these programs. In no case should admissions to these programs be based on demographic data about the student or their family, such as, but not limited to, family income, level of parent's education, or geographical location of the family's domicile. I put this in because, I mean, I don't think we should be unfairly discriminating against students based off family income, and I listened to our last policy committee meeting where Ms. Barnhart was just saying that nobody had been left out, out of an innovative high school program, based off just the five points they were getting, that some students were getting for their parents only having a high school education. However, of course, that begs the question, if they aren't replacing anybody, then it's not helping anybody either. So, and the fact is, without this language, when we write policy, we should be thinking long-term, not just the here and now. I mean, this, come a year, and I will stress this to my Republican colleagues, come a year from, from November, the, the political affiliation of this board could change drastically. And so, the board could, without any changes to this policy, the board could make that five points, 10 points, or add, add household income, or any number of things that we would probably, as Republicans, consider DEI sort of related things. So at least if we were to put this language in now here, if things change in the future, I guess the new board would have to change this policy, but I think this would protect us long-term to some extent, and I think we should be stating what we believe, and so I think we should leave, just add that original language I had into, along with what's being proposed by the policy committee.
Ms. Barnhart?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe this language covers what my colleagues bring up as a concern. Part of looking at the general statute, this is one of the qualifiers of a child that is a first-time college-goer, is part of the general statute. So this is our job to uphold the law, and so developing a rubric that the board would have to approve, would we be able to weight things that are more important or less important based on the will of the board, in a lesser or not category, but this is, I do not think that this is necessary, and my colleague spoke to it. Whoever is the majority of the board can change a policy moving forward, so whether it's in here now or not later, it doesn't matter. If the rubric is being approved by the board, which my understanding previously had not been done, I think it adds another layer of accountability. We already do things like this when we're talking about the Student Discipline Manual, all the different things that we pass every single year, all of the school improvement plans, we approve those as well, the board, so I think this falls in line to another guidance step that the board has already, we take, we take part in, in lots of other areas, so I think it's great as presented.
Ms. Justice?
Yes, I, my colleague on the left here just brought up state statute, which we absolutely have to follow, because if we don't, we can get in a lot of trouble for what my colleague to the right was bringing up here. Also, during our last policy meeting, I believe Dr. Barnes had something to say about the legality and the practice in our admissions for this particular consideration. Do you remember this conversation? Could you please bring it up again, if you don't mind?
I don't know if he was present at the last one.
We had this discussion.
I think you were at a.
It's true. Seems to remember, I'm sorry if I'm remembering.
So the general statute says, list three criteria for the cooperative innovative high schools. The rubric we currently had hits all three.
Okay.
The legislation does say any of the three, it doesn't require you to hit all three.
Uh huh.
So that would be the difference, I think, in that regard. And speaking, just to Ms. Barnhart's point, we do bring the board, the Enrollment and Assignment Handbook, did I say it right? The Enrollment and Assignment Handbook to the board, and now that you guys have changed policy, we are going to redo that, include the rubric in it, and that will be brought to the board for approval prior to opening of the lottery session in the spring.
Ms. Bradford?
I move that we approve policy to, oops, 4150, as we see it on our screens.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowie, will you call the wall?
Point of order? Didn't I make a motion to add, to amend it? Should we vote on that first?
There was no second to your motion, and I didn't hear.
Okay, if nobody's seconding you, then fine, but.
There was no second to that.
I don't know if one was asked for.
Okay.
Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
No.
And Mr. Perry?
Aye.
All right, that passes five to one. Next one polled was 2230. I believe that was Ms. Justice.
Yes, this is referring to different committees, the ad hoc ones and the regular ones. What, and I, I'm, now, my colleague is not here presently. I'm referring to what his concerns were, and I have the same concerns. I think that it's very important that we try to maintain an impartial way of conducting ourselves in our very many committees, and also our ad hoc committees, and for that reason, because unfortunately, in my opinion, we're a partisan body, I'm just saying state law. 85% of the school boards in this country are not partisan. It makes it harder at times for people to focus on decisions that aren't bothered by politics, so at least if you have one party, one person from each party in these, on these committees, it's, it's more representative of the community. For example, we never know from one election to the next what's gonna happen, but the point is that we all need to have representation, and to a certain, you've definitely got one political party here and one political party there. If you've got that representation, even, you know, during the changes in elections, changes in political makeup of a board, if you've got the consistency of knowing you've got one party of each, and these very important committees, there's less chance of people feeling, or it actually happening, having political decisions sway the direction that those committees go. So that is why I make a motion that we include in that, in that policy, or we can send it back to policy too, to talk about it more. I say we, I make a motion, we send it back to policy.
Okay. Is there a second?
I guess so.
There is not.
Okay, now, we'll make another motion that we add that to, this policy, that a member has to be, you gotta have, if you've got more than one member, you have to have one from each political party representing.
Okay, is there a second for that motion? Hearing none. Ms. Bradford, and then Ms. Barnhart, and Mr. Wildebohr.
Okay, two things. If you look at policy 2230, Board Committees, A, Board Standing Committees, go to the third paragraph, last line. Subcommittees may be formed to enhance and expedite the work of the committee, so I just wanted to point that one out again. Mr. Wildebohr and I talked about it today, to just remove that concern. But if you look under the Finance Committee, I still need you to, up and over the Bond and Capital. It's Finance, Capital in the middle, Bond on the end. So Finance, Capital, and Bond, Joint Committee, and I would move that we accept this policy as written with that, one small change.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
I thought we had changed that in.
I thought we had too, but there it is.
Yeah, I thought we had changed that, because when, when we talked about, yeah.
Actually, I think we voted on it.
So it should say, find, Finance, Capital, and Bond.
Yeah, that's the terminology.
I, I believe that we did do that, I think it just didn't happen in there, so if we could just make that, we'll have to.
Just as long as it gets there sooner or later.
Make that change. So there is a motion. Did we have a second for that? There was. Yes, there was.
If it's already, we don't know.
Ms. Barnhart and Mr. Wildebohr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the concern that my colleagues are bringing up, however, I disagree. We had a call to audience member discuss how a board member talked about the toxic hatred of MAGA Republicans and the correspondence with that. Our job as elected officials, no matter what party you come from, is going to be to make the best decisions. There are times that on issues, we disagree. That does not mean that we are not acting in the best interest, it comes down to a disagreements. So looking at this makeup representation, no matter what political affiliation you are with, if, for instance, there's one from a political party and the rest are from the other, then that is one person serving on all of those committees, and I don't think that seems right when we are elected as a body to do the governing work. Committees, when there are topics for consideration, bring forth recommendations to the entire board, which is every single one who is elected, duly elected, no matter what political party you come from, to make decisions. And so I do not believe that that recommendation is necessary for those reasons. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Wildebohr?
And I was just gonna echo, you know, you look at the two counties on either side of us, you know, we would not be able to follow that at all. Brunswick and Fender both are all of one political party, so, you know, there could be that possibility where there's, as, as my colleague to the right said, one or none from a particular party, either way, you know, and then you would have a situation that you couldn't keep up with this policy, so to write it in, and then you're not be able to follow it up, I don't know if that's the best way to go.
And I'm just gonna comment, because I haven't had an opportunity. I do want to note that when I first did committee assignments, that was my goal. I did, I did very intentionally try to echo or mirror the makeup of the board. We did have some shifts in committees throughout the year, as we reduced, condensed, combined, and so that changed some of the makeup of those, of some of those committees, but my original intention was to mirror the, the makeup of the board. I think that, Mr. Perry, have you spoken on this?
No.
So I'm gonna give him an opportunity, and then back to you, Ms. Bradford.
I think I'd like to make a, well, let me, I'm gonna make a substitute motion, but I think that it, it is important to, you know, when you're dealing with, you know, one or two members on this, I can understand how, you know, given the makeup, that you shouldn't automatically have to have, you know, diversity, but if you start talking about three members, board members severing in a board, I think at that point, you need that extra, you know, diversity of opinion, and it doesn't even, you know, so I would probably like to, you know, because you, you want the, a little bit of both sides of it, because even if you don't agree with the other side, sometimes they bring up good points and they help you make you think better. Ideas get together, and sometimes, sometimes actually, the other side has a good idea here, here and there. So the, so I would like to, I just modified to say, if there are three or more committee members on the board, that there will be at least one member from the minority party.
I second that.
Ms. Bradford?
I just wanted to do a little clarification about the Finance, Capital, and Bond Committee. It is a very large committee that was formed last October, and on it, you have two Democratic county commissioners, you have no Republican county commissioner, you have three board members. Those three board members include me, and then we brought in the Capital and the Bond representatives to, when we formed it as a joint committee, so that's how those board members came, they came from those committees when we combined them. We have three principals, one from elementary, one from middle, and one from high school. We have a treasurer, we have the Teacher of the Year, we have three business meters, a finance person, a construction and bond specialist, and we have the Chair of the Chamber of Commerce. We also have an executive director who's over the high schools. We have the County Assistant Manager, we have the County Finance Officer, we have the County CFO, we have, from the New Hanover County staff, school staff, we have Dr. Barnes, we have Ashley Sutton, and we have her second-in-command. So it's a large committee, but it is quite diverse, shall we say. And so, just to answer some of those questions about the committee, it is a relatively new committee, and somebody called me yesterday to ask me for the makeup of that, so it was right on my, on my mind to share that. It's quite balanced in terms of politically, and the jobs everyone holds in the schools and in the county, and it is unique and it is special, and I'm very proud of it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, so we only have about four minutes, and we do have one more policy to cover.
Okay.
And there is a substitute motion on the table to add, in committees of three or more, at least one member shall be of the minority party. Is that correct verbiage?
Yes, and everything else being the same.
Okay. Any indication of where that would go?
No, I'll leave it to your, your, Mr. Wildebohr's.
Well, you have made the motion, so that is why I'm asking.
There was that section again. Under committee assignment process.
Under the main paragraph?
Yeah, somewhere.
So under the second paragraph of A, Board Standing Committees, the substitute motion is to add, all boards comprising of three or more board members shall include one member of the minority party.
Sounds good.
That sounds good, yeah.
That came out of my mouth. Go ahead, Ms. Bradford.
If it ever became where there was six and one.
If it ever became where there was six and one, please understand that that one board member would then have to do all the committees. Just be aware of that factor.
Well, that's what the thing of the three.
You said committees of three or more.
Yes, in committees of three or more, the minor, whoever was the minority board member. So if, for example, it was six Democrat members and one Republican, that Republican would have to be on every single committee of three or more.
Right.
Which, I'm not sure how many there are of those.
Quite a few, actually.
Finance, legislated, policy.
Okay. We have a board member called the question. We're going to vote on the end of discussion on the substitute motion. This is, we're voting on the end of discussion. We're not voting on the motion, we're voting on the end of discussion. And that requires a two-thirds, which is going to be four of us. So, Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll?
Mr. Perry?
Hi.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Wildabour?
Yes.
And Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Perfect. That is six to zero. All right, so now we are going to vote on the substitute motion to add that section into policy regarding a minority member. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll on that?
Ms. Barnhart? Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Wildabour?
No.
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
And Ms. Justice?
Yes.
That is a tie, which means it fails.
A fail.
It fails, a tie fails. We do not have a majority. Going back to the original motion, which was to approve the policy as it has been, well, with the edits requested, which is Finance, Capital and Bond Joint Committee. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll on that?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart? Ms. Mason?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildabour?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. We have one more, but we are past time at this point.
That's not bad, actually.
It's-
Second.
Your mic is off. Make a motion to pass Policy 2335.
Second.
Okay. Because we are past time.
Well, I have-
This puts me in a very difficult, Ms. Justice, very briefly.
Well, my colleague who's not here presently made a great suggestion, which was for the public to be able to receive, once we get them, then the public can get them. I know that we don't always get it in a timely manner. And then we can also, if it's, if we change something during the process, I mean, that would be known also. I see no reason the public not getting the same information we get. So I really do think that, you know, I'm opposed to having it passed without that caveat in it, or passage in it.
Okay. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll?
Mr. Wildabour?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
And Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
That passes five to zero. Next up, and this is going to be a long discussion, the proposed bond projects. We have had a lot of discussion on this. We've had the recommendations from the Finance, Capital and Bond Committee and their recommendations. We discussed last week which New Hanover plan that we had wanted to do. And so right now, looking at what is proposed by the Finance, Capital and Bond, just so that the public is aware, River Lights Elementary, New Hanover High School Phase One, Pine Valley Elementary, Trask Middle School, Porter Snack Elementary, and then district-wide technology improvements, safety improvements, program management and contingency and HVAC. So that right now is what is on the table, and we can start the discussion. Mr. Perry?
I'm thinking maybe we can save ourselves a half an hour tonight. As, so the public knows, and I'm sure you all know, I, my fellow board members know, but I, I went on Google Earth yesterday to try to see if there was a sixty, sixty to seventy acre plot of land within the downtown area where we could build a new high school rather than going with the phased approach for restructure, redoing Hanover High School over twelve years. Regardless of how we feel about that or not, I think we need to explore all options. And I don't know why nobody had mentioned, at least us new board members, that this was at least- I am getting to the point.
It is.
So, so there's a-
I'm sorry, I have to rule on her point of order. I rule that it is not well received. I'm going to allow you to finish.
Oh, thank you. So I'm just, so the point is, is this land, perhaps it's available, how much would it cost? I think this is information that we need to get from our staff. My understanding is, is that we've got until the end of the month to make a decision and get this to the Board of Commissioners as far as our bond request. So what I'm requesting right now is simply to let our staff, our senior staff, and superintendent, get us all the information on this, as this new school option at Johnson area, at the current Johnson location and the surrounding area, and get that to us within two weeks. And we can set up a separate meeting just to discuss that, and then we can decide then. And if everybody still wants to go with the phased option, then so be it. At least we've made an informed decision. We would know what the parameters are. And so, and that still leaves us time to get a final decision to the Board of Commissioners. And so this is a hugely impactful decision we are making that is going to affect generations of students after we're long gone. So I think we need to do our due diligence. So can we just give our staff two weeks and then come back and negotiate? I'm going to make a motion that we do that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion on that. I know Ms. Bradford had her hand up, and then I saw Ms. Barnhart and Mr. Wildabour.
Okay. The calendar provided by the County Commission for the General Obligation Bond Calendar says that we need to have the project scope determined by October 31st, 2025. Second, with all due respect to every board member here, we held three meetings with the two architect firms, three county commissioners, three board members. We had three different meetings, so every county commissioner and every school board member had the opportunity to meet with those people, the architects, the engineers, the staff, the county CFO, the county manager, our CFO, our superintendent. We had three of those. And in those three, they tweaked it just a little bit to where you end up with the proposal that we have, so we had a fourth meeting. Every member up here had the opportunity to attend one or more of those meetings. The board member to the far right attended zero, for whatever reason. He didn't attend. He would have found out that information if he had been there. And to hold up this entire process because that board member didn't attend is just ludicrous. There's a map in the back room that shows Johnson that Dr. Morgan went over with us, so I would ask him to explain that. We got the map from, from the board member. It shows this big, huge piece of property, but actually, part of that property is contaminated and it can't be built on. Part of it, we sold last year for a million dollars to the railroad, and it's a little bit smaller than, than, than what's been put out there. So to wait on this, that's been in the works for over ten months, would be just downright sad. So the other thing that I want to say about it while I have the floor is the recommendations from the committee, there's five, and they're in no particular order at this point. And included in those five, in the bond recommendation, you have three really important things. You have $10 million for district-wide technology improvements. You have $20 million for district-wide building system and infrastructure, like the ACs on the top of the building. And you have $10 million for district-wide safety improvements, included in that entire bond. And the press is just really not focused on that. And I think it's important that $40 million of the 300 and approximately $30 million would, would be spread out among all of our schools and take care of some things that have been desperately needed for years. So with that, Madam Chair, I go back, yield back.
Ms. Barnhart and then-
Thank you, Madam Chair. With all due respect to my colleague, we did make an informed decision. It is one that we could, yes, we could collectively purchase an additional 60 acres in addition to the cost of building a brand-new high school to the tune of $300 million, plus all the acquiring of the land, which would be probably double that. I mean, if we're just, just guesstimating. When we were looking at the bond capacity, the debt capacity that county is able to accrue, and looking at previous school bonds that have passed, because we want a bond on the ballot that's going to pass, because we want to benefit all of our students. So looking at this, I do not think it is smart or feasible to hold up the process on a hope and a prayer that we can just, we're going to find the money to do it. Because the reality is, we are the stewards of the taxpayers here in New Hanover County, and I do not believe that it is the best stewardship practice to do that. The renovation at New Hanover High School, I think we just got a memo too, like in last week, they're finally disconnecting the mobile units at Hanover because we're back into the building themselves, and like, that's the excitement. Because this time last year, right before school started, we had to vacate kids and then get them to a safe spot because we, we needed to repurpose 16 classrooms and get the building structured, structurally sound. So I respect wanting the idea of a brand-new high school. I can understand the excitement behind that. But seeing the long launderness of needs, I don't think it is fiscally responsible to go down that route, because we need to be able to identify bond projects that are going to benefit every single student, or as many as possible, at least. And my colleague to the left pointed out, we do have projects in here that will benefit every single student. That is purposeful, because when we're talking to the community and we're talking to people, whether they're in our schools or not, understanding the impact that this bond will have is very important. So I respect my colleague bringing this to attention. We, as a board, voted on Phase Two. There's not new information. We had this information, like my colleague to the left said, we had multiple meetings to discuss this in depth, to ask questions. It was not an ill-informed decision. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Justice?
Yes, this suggestion came up today, and I thought it was reasoned by the time, the process of communication between Central Office and my colleague to the right who first posed it. When I, and I did sit in on those meetings, and there was clear concern about the cost of land and the availability of land in that downtown area, for real. But there was never any specifics that we discussed on that, on the level now that my colleague on the right has brought up. And then when he did ask the question of Central Office staff if they had information that could answer his questions further, they said that they were going to investigate. And I felt from looking at the conversation or the discussion that there might be a possibility, can you, am I too loud? Okay, I'm sorry. I was like, what's all this over here?
He's exercising.
Not you, me. It's me, and I can see it's preferable.
So, and, and, you know, being responsible, fiscally responsible, the fact is, in a perfect world, a new school would make a lot of sense, just because it will last much longer than a hundred-year-old school, although I love New Hanover. I'm just saying that what I was hearing today might bring us new information that might cause us, in the long run, in the next hundred years, to be more fiscally responsible to our district. So that's the reason I, I'm willing to find, it might not, maybe not two weeks, because the, the commissioners are quite, and I don't blame them, for this is a huge thing, this bond issue. But we do need to be fiscally responsible, not just for the next five or 10 years, but literally the next hundred years. And that is a very, very old, wonderful building. It can be repurposed, anyway. That's my concern.
Mr. Wildabour?
And I definitely understand my colleague to the right's, I'm not on.
I'm not on. I'm going to start that again. I'm going to try that again. I do definitely understand my colleague to the right's point. It does make a lot of sense. This is a hundred-year-old school versus a brand-new school. But I think Dr. Morgan has a lot of information that he can share with us right now that will discuss, that will end or help to further understand, help us understand. So if I could turn it over to Dr. Morgan, please?
I could turn it over to Dr. Morgan.
Can I, can I ask you to do that?
You can, you can go ahead, Dr. Morgan.
Okay, thank you.
I second that.
I'm good to go.
You're good to go.
Okay, sure, I'll do what I can to offer, I think, what's important information about the Johnson site. Specifically, the, it's important to keep in mind that we sold, I'm sorry, the board sold 13 acres roughly, just a couple of months ago. So of the 65 acres that, that Mr. Perry outlined and shared, I think it's important to keep in mind that of that, the board currently owns 28 of those acres. The school site itself that's currently there sits on about 10 acres. So that leaves, you know, 18 acres that, that are not being used, that a portion of that is, has not been cleared, and the remainder of that is not used. And a part of that is, and a big reason for that is because it would need to be remediated. So from the ownership, when we purchased it from the railroad, a lot of the soil samples showed that there were elevated levels of certain things that were, that did not meet code. And so in portions of that land, we went in, two decades ago, we went in and remediated, we excavated the land, we excavated, we got rid of all the treated lumber that had been in there. Part of the concern was the lumber had been treated with arsenic. That was something they did previously to help stave off insects and rot, and so that's no longer done. But some of the reason that those levels were elevated, we believe, is because lumber that had been discarded from the previous ownership. So we've got a school site that takes up about 10 of that 28 acres that we have. The acreage around that site that would make up the other 65 acres, a portion of that was sold, again, about two months ago to DOT for the railroad that is proposed, which they're planning to go, you know, right alongside, I'm sorry, I'm looking at a map, the southeastern side of that Johnson pre-K land, and it will go up to the north, northwest, and connect into, into existing railroad, rail lines. So a couple of things would have to happen for us to use that site, to expand on that site, to even dig on that site. We would have to excavate existing land that has not been treated and not been tested in a while. The land that we're talking about is sectioned off. There's, staff and students can't access it because there are fences there, and/or it's overgrown because it's wooded area and never been cleared, or it's not been cleared while we own it. The other thing to keep in mind is that the land, a lot of the lands of the north and northeast of us is owned by the railroad station. So I, I can only assume that if we were to purchase back property that we just sold them, there's, there's a reasonable chance they're not going to give it to us for less than we sold it to them for. I also think there's a pretty good chance that, that they want to use the land that they own north of us, and they want to tie into that with the land that they purchased from us. So my assumption is that that would not come cheap. And then the last piece of land that is not technically ours, there are other couple, sort of smaller pieces around that aren't necessarily owned by the railroad, but one of them specifically is owned by the Boys and Girls Club, and that's directly to the left of our property at Johnson. And, and across the street from that is the DC Virgo property. So if you're, you know, trying to, trying to see it mentally, it's directly across the street from Virgo, and it- And it butts right up next to Johnson pre-K land.
Ms. Mason?
I have not had an opportunity to speak.
Oh, I just wanted to ask.
So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead. Along with all of that, we have to also consider that Johnson is housing our pre-K kids. The last time, so, so if we were to move forward with that, we would either need to tear down the building and move the kids, or move the kids and utilize the building for the high school. And if, if board members can recall, not too long ago, when we suggested a movement of students from one pre-K center to another pre-K center, there was a lot of community, community concern. And so I think that that needs to be something that is considered in addition to where, if, if we were to keep that building, what would need to be done to fit it to be a high school-appropriate building? Because as of right now, it is a pre-K center. And I, having a high school student that lives in my house, he would not want to use a pre-K center for his high school. Just from a student standpoint. So I think that it's not just that we don't have the land and there's not enough there. It is also, there's a lot of moving parts when it comes to the student population. And I think that we have to take that into account as well. We are at about 14 minutes, and we have not even started talking about the rest of the bond project. So, Mr. Perry, super quick, ask your question, and then I'm going to go for the vote.
So, related to the, I will, I will first mention that we have been unhappy with how UNCW is running DC Virgo, so potentially the Johnson pre-K could go there and move it. And I don't think people will be too upset, because it's pretty nearby. The, as far as the remediation, do you have any estimates on how much the remediation would cost? Could you get us that information if you had two weeks to do it? Could you get us information on how much it would cost to buy back this property from the DOT? Is this information that you can provide us so that we can make an informed decision? I mean, right now, we're making guesses on how much it would cost, or suppositions. How about us finding out the actual facts? You know, maybe you guys discussed this property long before I got on the board, but I wasn't made aware of it. And so when we voted, when we, when I voted to go along with this sale, I had no idea that I was voting to get rid of our only new high school option. So I think that that is the information that should have been provided to me before I made that vote.
So, please, can we get the information?
I don't think two weeks is a reasonable time to find out if we can excavate that property, to be honest.
Okay. Madam Chair, I called the question.
I think two weeks to try and figure out how we can, how much we can offer all of these other property owners, as well as find out how we would be able to move through the process of determining which company would be best to help us in excavating that land and remediating it. I think it can be done, I don't think it can be done two weeks.
Okay.
But, the will of the board.
A board member called the question, so we're going to vote on calling the question. That is ending the discussion on this motion. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll?
Mr. Wildebor?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Ms. Justice? And Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Okay. And now, we're going to vote on the motion, which is to delay the bond vote and get, give two weeks to staff to gather more information regarding the Johnson property. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll on that?
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Mr. Wildebor?
No.
Ms. Mason?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Ms. Justice? And Mr. Perry?
I'm voting for my own motion, yes.
Okay. That motion fails one to five. Moving back to the bond projects, I just, we have about 11 minutes left on our time. I just want to, for myself, and to share my own opinion, as far as what the committee has presented, having been to the vast majority of these schools and seeing the needs in each and every one of them. While I would love to get more for New Hanover High, I understand that there's a limitation that we do have, and I'm hopeful that at some point, we can work with commissioners, that we can work with the endowment to see if we can fund more of it along the way. But for right now, I am in support of these. I see the need for, I know some of these projects have been in waiting for so many years. And so just to move forward and give as many kids in our community across the county a revitalized school, or a brand-new school, would be my preference. So, Ms. Barnhart?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also appreciate these five projects. I do have a slight suggestion for the board to move New Hanover and Trask Middle School as the top two projects, keeping all the same five projects. But if we're trying to rank the priorities to our commissioners, and my justification is this, is we have seen a decline of enrollment in New Hanover County schools, specifically when looking at it, looking at the elementary schools, we've seen some schools drop in lower enrollment. So while I do believe those two schools that we've identified need to be replaced, they're outdated, they're not safe, those elementary schools need to be there. They would also increase capacity, which spawned a discussion of potentially, would we have to look at consolidation? The answer is yes. But looking at the priorities, I believe personally that New Hanover High School and Trask should be the top two, and then drop those two elementary schools, and well, and Porter's Neck is on there as well. So make those be the bottom three. That's my only suggestion. They're all great projects. We would have the ability to increase the students, which we talked about optimizing our buildings for staffing, so we didn't have any part-time staff. That optimization number of 650 would allow full-time staff of how we would want to staff our schools. So I think it's something that we need to consider in the priority. But if, if it's the will of the board to just accept the proposal as is, but I would, I would make the recommendation to move New Hanover and Trask to the top two slots.
Okay. Ms. Bradford?
And while I respect those comments, and I don't have a particular order, but I feel like, one of the things that bothers me is back in 2014 or 2017, 2014, voters went to the polls and they voted on a bond for schools. And they voted to spend money for the Riverlights Elementary, Pine Valley Elementary, and Mary C. Williams. Money was allocated, and they drew the plans, and then the country kind of went south in terms of its economy, and those were then put on long-term icebox hold. So the voters wanted those three projects so long ago, you know, 11 years ago. So for me, to be fidelity with my voters, I feel like I need to put them at the top of the list. It's not, it's not personal. I'd love to see them all done at exactly the same time. They can't be done all at the same time. There's not the, what's the right word? It's just not possible to do them all at the same time. There has to be some kind of order. And it's no disrespect to Trask, which is building from scratch a brand-new school as well. And it's no disrespect to New Hanover. And those are, that's the only thing, I would, I would oppose putting those at the very bottom of the list, because they were on the 2014 bond that voters voted to do, and it hasn't been done yet. Thank you.
Ms. Justice? And then Mr. Perry?
I'm confused. Riverlights was not even part of 2014, so that must have happened later on, though. I might be wrong.
Maybe it was 2017.
No, it would, I'm sorry, Riverlights was not part of the 2014 bond?
But it was in 2017, and I think they made an adjustment to get the, to get the building built, or being designed.
There is an, yeah, there was an agreement to convey the land, I think, 2017. The, but that was done at no cost to us. So I think the schematic designs for the school were paid for at that time, but that was not part of the bond. Yes.
Thanks. Mr. Perry?
I would suggest that we, and because of the reason I'm going to give, I would suggest that we separate the New Hanover High School from the other bond items. You have a situation here where, contrary to what my colleague a couple, a couple over says, is the price tag on this, Phase One might be one thing, and I think we can count on it, that it will get completed. But as far as the rest of those phases, $250 million, I'd double, triple that by the time we're done. So the problem's going to be is, we may not get that Phase Two or that Phase Three. And we may not complete that project, because if the economy worsens, or inflation goes up, and the cost of this goes up, the voters might not give us that second or third bond that we need to actually finish it. So what I want to do is put that, what I'm suggesting now is simply to separate them. Ask for New Hanover High School one bond, and ask for all the rest of the stuff in another bond. I've got no problems with the rest of the stuff at all.
If I might, while I understand what my colleague has just said, the difficulty is, if you are doing a bond that is specific to one school, the investment from the community is not going to be as broad. It needs to have a far-reaching benefit. So while I understand what my colleague is saying, I have to disagree that it would be separate. I do believe it's the responsibility of this board, of whatever board follows, that upon the approval of the bond and the work being done for New Hanover High School, that the conversation continues. We need to collaborate with our county commissioners. We need to discuss with them possible funding sources. We need to discuss with the endowment possible funding. And I think that if we can work and have their investment, I think that that would continue on, whether inflation goes up or not. I think that those conversations and having those positive relationships with those separate entities is going to benefit our students in the long run. I don't think it would be a good idea to solely focus a bond on one specific school. So, Ms. Barnhart?
I also wanted to draw attention to the fact that part of meeting with the county, we learned that the county is able to accrue debt whenever they want to. And so when we were discussing about a bond on the ballot, the justification of this is, is this is community-driven, supported or not, to take out that debt. Because there's a ceiling cap for the amount of debt they're allowed to take out. So this was in there. So my thought process of only putting one of the phases in agreeance with my colleague to the left, they can, the county has the ability to pick up the tab on Phase Two and Phase Three essentially whenever they want, and it works with their finances and keeping on, in their own policy to accrue debt. So I want to, I want to bring that to attention. It does not necessarily mean another bond is going to have to come for Phase Two and Phase Three in order for New Hanover High School to be completed. That's important. That was something, when we were discussing options as the committee, that was a good factoid to know. So I just want to put that out there as well. Because I do believe that we're not going to stop here, but understanding that this is a phased approach. And once we complete Phase One, when we're able to secure Phase Two and Three funding through whatever streams of revenue sources, but the county commissioners have that ability whenever they so choose to accrue debt, as long as it's within their laws and policy. So I wanted to bring that to attention. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We have about a minute and a half.
I can do it.
And I'm gonna, Ms. Bradford?
New Hanover County produced a general obligation bond issuances paperwork, which should be found online. If you guys want to go to that scenario three, $300 million of new government-issued bond issuances, they, Eric Kredel, the CFO for the county, explained, even if we do adopt a $300 million bond, for a couple of years, we will be over the per capita debt limit that we have. But Mr. Kredel explained that we could do that for a couple of years and be fine, because then it drops back off. And so the idea that we could take on more debt in this bond is not feasible. It's not fiscally responsible. The county has told us, no, we can't go higher than that without then increasing the debt per capita. Debt per capita is how much each one of us carry of the debt that the county owes. And it's in the $1,800 per citizen right now, and we don't want to get any higher, because it ruins our bond, so on and so on. It's all pretty deep. But the deal is, we can't borrow any more money than what we're already proposing.
We are at time, and there has been no motions made. We do need to make a decision.
What, what kind of motion are you looking for?
I move that we approve the recommendation of the Capital Bond and Finance Committee, so that it can be presented to the county commissioners for next steps.
Since we are at time, and we've had a lengthy discussion, Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll?
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Nay.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebor?
Yes.
And Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
All right. We are at time for that. And, Madam Chair? I do want to, I do want to note that moving forward as a board, I hope that we can all work in tandem with one another and move forward to push these projects forward, that we can support them, and that we can really earn the trust of the community, so that we can get these projects accomplished. That being said, next up is board attorneys. And this was brought forward to us because our attorneys are, the contracts are due or running out in December. And so we did receive a memo, I'm trying to pull up, regarding services and what our staff had, as far as the recommendations that they had. We all received that. And so, Ms. Bradford?
I would move that we continue with our current board attorneys for the next one-year period, and that we also choose to continue going forward with pointer's rule to do EC.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay. Ms. Barnhart seconded that. Let's start my timer. Ms. Barnhart?
Thank you. I just, I would like to change the timeframe a little bit with that. What one of my colleagues had said at the agenda review was getting on a summer cycle, so a June 30 cycle. So rather than a one-year from to date, I'd like to make it be for June 30 of 2026, so that that allows some leeway, and then we're not in the midst of graduation season and, you know, final exams. So I would like to change and amend that, if possible, but to do it through June 30, 2026.
Do you make a motion?
Yeah, to amend that motion.
I second.
I'll second it. Okay. That's good.
Sure. I make amend that amendment.
I would hope you would. Okay. So there is amendment on the table. Is there any discussion on that amendment? Okay. All those in favor of amending the timeframe to June of 26?
June 30, 2026.
June 30, 2026. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, five to zero. So there has been a motion, and it has been amended. So the amended motion is to continue with our current legal representation and to add pointer's rule for EC coverage. Mr. Wildebor?
I don't know if we can do, and maybe I'm missing something, but I don't think our EC coverage is currently with pointer's rule, so I don't know that we can do that without putting RF, whatever letter, I don't always remember. putting an RFP, whatever letter I don't always remember, P, out for the EC part.
We just discontinued that. Is that a?
I think we're going month-to-month, correct, for sync? So, yeah, so we're going month-to-month, but we could just go ahead and extend, like, extend that contract?
Well, what they're wanting to do is not with sync, but with pointer sprule.
We need an RFP for pointer sprule.
Do we need to redo an RFP for that?
Oh.
Because that did end.
They had a contract that ended in June.
You don't have to, but if the board, in the past, we have gone through that process so the board could have a committee and be able to evaluate the different groups. But the board doesn't have to do that if they feel comfortable and agree to just move forward with a particular company.
So I make a motion that we put out an RFP for our EC services.
So you're amending?
We've already got a amendment. You can't do two, can you?
Are you substituting?
I'm substituting it. There we go.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So it's a substitute motion to put out an RFP for EC. Is there a second for that?
I'll second that for discussion purposes.
Ms. Justice?
So what we're saying is we want to separate, not that it already isn't, the contract or how we're working currently with the EC services from our general counsel contract. So that's what we're voting on right now? Shouldn't we start with that before we?
So, right?
Madam Chair, point of order.
Yes, ma'am.
Judy's right. We need to separate the motion if we're going to vote on EC separately. We need to separate the motion into two. So what do we have to do? Defeat the motion and then make two new ones?
Let's just defeat the motion and come up with two new ones. I think that that's a reasonable.
Or we just vote to separate the motions.
Okay.
That is a lot of motions.
It is.
Or?
Have you restated the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Then we can't, I can't change it.
Okay.
So the substitute motion is to put out an RFP for EC.
So you kind of meant to separate the motions?
If we were to vote that forward, it would take the place of yours because it is a substitute.
But it'll only be affecting the one side because?
Yeah. Mr. Boarder, did you mean to separate the motions and do EC separately?
He told me.
No. Okay. This is why we need Robert's Rules training, y'all. This is why.
Yeah, let's remember, we need this one, separating motions.
Ms. Justice?
Can I, I would like to make a substitute motion that we?
No, we already have a substitute. We have too many motions currently on the table. So somebody is either going, we're going to either have to vote on the substitute motion, vote it down, vote it yes, and then move forward from there. So the substitute motion on the table is that we put out an RFP for EC services. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll?
Point of order? The substitute motion is a substitute to my motion, and my motion was that, well, and then Josie amended it so that it'd be through June. We're voting on the through June for Crossley McIntyre.
We're voting on his substitute motion, which is to put out an RFP for EC.
And that's the only part of that?
That is the only thing we are voting on right now. If it passes, we will not vote on your motion, to my understanding.
Can you?
Because it replaces your motion.
Okay. I'm following what they say and hope they're right.
You're with me. I am correct.
Okay.
So substitute motion, yes or no?
Okay. So we're voting on the substitute motion to put out an RFP for EC services. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll?
Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Ms. Mason? Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
And Ms. Bradford?
No.
So this substitute motion passes, and that addresses our EC component, which replaces the previous motion. So we still need?
Point of order.
Our own legal counsel.
So point of order, we continue month-to-month with where we are. Will we go through that process? Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Yes, Ms. Barnhart?
Respectfully, I make a motion to extend our legal contract through June 30 of 2026.
Sounds good.
There we go. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to zero.
Thumbs up.
We got through it.
Yeah.
All right. Next up, school bus stop arm violation ordinance. That, I believe, is Dr. Barnes.
So we talked about this a little bit at our agenda review. I did bring our proposal to the county commissioners to request them to create an ordinance that would allow us to charge and access folks who passed a stopped school bus with a stop-arm camera. So we have most of our buses already equipped with our stop-arm cameras. However, the county had also talked to the county that had done this already, Harnett County, and they had talked with both the school system and the county and the sheriff's department. That, Harnett County did not find that they found a fiscal benefit to doing it. My response was, of course, it doesn't really matter if it makes money, it's if kids are safer. However, the county did not have the appetite at this point to go back through and create an ordinance without, with what we brought to the table. So my recommendation is we can either pause on it, or we can go back and do an RFP again to see if, what agencies there are out there that perform this function of the stop-arm camera, to see if one would be more fiscally beneficial.
Okay. Ms. Barnhart?
I would like to make a motion to do an RFP so we can continue this process for the reasons that you just stated.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Perry?
Quickly, just again, like I mentioned at our agenda review meeting last week, I'd like to have a review of our bus stops to make sure that, and the most important thing to me is not the, how much revenue we make, it's the safety. And I'm sure that's the case with you as well. We don't want this happening, and I think reviewing where our bus stops are and doing what we can to get more bus drivers, I guess is part of the problem, I think. Let's explore that, too, because some, you know, you go down College Road and you get a, and there's a whole bunch of bus stops for one after another, and you get some impatient people. If your bus stop is there, you're going to, bound to get more people trying to pass it. Whereas if we could possibly have them in better locations that aren't so well traffic congested, then, you know, maybe we would avoid some of these.
Ms. Barnhart?
Thank you. I know that our district has been doing initiatives to stop people from running bus stop signs because a bus stop sign is a stop sign. So we have increased the length of the stop-arm, we have more lights on the buses, we have strategic messaging that collaborates with our county and our news station, and even NC DOT, those flashing lights you see on the side of the road before the school year starts, we remind people of this is the expectation. So at one point, and Dr. Morgan, I don't want to put him on the spot, but if he knows this number, shouted out like a cheerleader over there, at one point, it was said like 100 violations a day from school buses. That could be the state. That might not just be New Hanover County schools.
I've heard that number.
So in addition to, and Deb used to be here earlier tonight, but in addition to that, we have had bus accidents where people run into our school buses, where children have been injured by riding a bus from a car accident. So those, that number has declined. The last time I had a conversation with her, I don't know the stats, I think it went from 13 to maybe 6 if I was, if I was, if I was a, it went, it went down, went less than that?
No, it was a year ago.
It definitely went down because we did some of these improvements. And so I see this as an opportunity to continue that. It was also, in addition, to see that it could potentially be a revenue source, which there's still potential that it could be, doesn't look super feasible at the moment. But knowing those two combinations of seeing we're doing initiatives to decrease issues with school bus safety, this is, this is a positive thing. I want to support this, continue going in the direction. And I believe if our county commissioners and our sheriffs need more information to do this correctly and help keep our kids safe, it's what we need to do. Thank you.
We have about a minute left, and I want to make sure, because Mr. Wildebohr doesn't always talk, so I'm going to give him the opportunity.
There you go. Go for me.
If we have time.
As a guy that used to drive a bus, I mean, it is, it is very, very important that we keep our students safe. You know, I said that as a principal, as a sister principal, that that's probably one of the hardest jobs. They're all hard jobs, but that's definitely one of the hardest jobs, trying to keep that bus where it needs to be. So we've got to do everything we can to keep our students safe on that bus. So whether it's a revenue source or it's not, either way, if it helps keep our kids safe, I think our superintendent can go back and really work with that, put that RFP out, and we can get this, anything we can do to keep our students safe and our buses safe.
You've got 20 seconds.
And I agree with the two board members, but I think that some of our community groups could get behind encouraging the county commissioners to go forward with this because maybe they don't understand the safety aspect of having the stop-arm camera revenue. Again, if it's just minimal, that's fine, but the whole goal is to make our kids safer. That would be a great project for everybody to write their county commissioners and say, hey, you know, think back, rethink that decision not to go forward with the stop-arm cameras and making that, was it, create an ordinance around it. So y'all could, y'all could give cards and letters to county commissioners, create an ordinance around the stop-arm cameras, please.
All right. So there is a motion on the table. We are at time to draft an RFP to move forward with this. I'm going to say, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to zero.
And that RFP, I think one of, some of the other concerns just are logistics. It's a very large-scale issue to sort of work through. So the RFP will specifically look to find something that is less intensive on the staff here, on the staff at the county level and the sheriff's department.
Right. Next up is revisiting Robert's Rules of Order training. Mr. Perry, you brought that forward.
So I would probably defer to my colleague to the very far left. I believe there was some new information in regards to our other option in regards to the C A L N, option that we did not receive last Tuesday. If you could just present that briefly, a synopsis of what you found out, and I think you're best to speak on it, and that way, you know, I'm not necessarily saying I'm going to change my vote, but I'd like to hear all information, like I was saying before, so.
All right. I know that?
I'm looking for that email. We all got it.
I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Wildebohr because he does have his hand.
And I do want to ask, I think with your permission, Madam Chair, I believe our attorneys have a second option also that they might be able to share at this time.
Mr. Cronkite?
Yeah. I reached out to the state of government, the state of Wilson, the state of Lawrence, and she can do a two-hour presentation in November on Robert's Rules for free. It would be by webinar or WebEx, or Zoom or WebEx.
Two hours for free. Oh. Is that like?
Well, I want to make sure. Hang on, I have not called on anybody.
UNC School of Government.
Golly. Ms. Bradford, go ahead.
So the proposal from Kellen was $1,250. That covered eight and a half hours, of which 6.5 would be preparing us for it. Two hours would be onsite training. I wasn't prepared to do this. So here we go. It includes the travel, the airfare, the hotel mileage, it's a presentation, it's a practice script, exercises, a review of school board meeting records to offer construction feedback on meeting procedure. And this nationally-recognized parliamentary trainer, they sent us his resume, and he's been training for 25 years. They're doing, Thursday of this week, they're doing a school board in South Carolina. We could probably tune into that to see what it looks like. There's this a little bit different than ours. But I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to do this because I didn't know this was coming. But I believe that since it's taxpayers' dollars, that we should be very fiscally responsible with them, especially in the economy that we're in, regardless of whose budget it comes out of. And if we can get one for free, or we can get one for $1,200, why would we go with the $2,250 option? That's my concern.
So if I might, I do know, and I do recall stating that Ms. Tanis Nelson was willing to negotiate with us for price. So it isn't necessarily that cost, and that was the original reason for reaching out to both of these, for just more specifics. And so it's not set in stone that that's the 2,200. I think Ms. Justice had her hand up.
We discussed this thoroughly during the agenda review, and I'm not sure why the other group had not sent the information ahead of time that Ms. Bradford just conveyed. And there is negotiations, this is the reason we got this email. Part of it was that Ms. Nelson does want to negotiate with us for the appropriate price. As far as a free training, that would be great. The wonderful part about Ms. Nelson is she actually lives locally. She's an internationally-recognized expert on parliamentary procedure, and she's trained thousands. She's trained the passports. I was on the board along with Mr. Wildebohr when she did. She does an excellent job. She's been watching our board meetings, and she's already got suggestions. She is local, and we should always try to do local. We also had the question asked during the discussion and during the agenda review, we asked the superintendent if we had the funding for this, and what was your answer, Dr. Barnes?
I can't seem to stay out of anything.
I know. It's your job.
I will tell you that the board has their own professional development budget, $1,000 one way or the other. I think you guys need to make the decision based on what is best for the board.
Thank you.
We are at time because you did only allot five minutes, and there has been no motions.
I will make a motion?
Okay.
To reconsider that vote and to postpone a new vote to the agenda review at the end of this month.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We're going to vote on that. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll?
Mr. Perry?
Hi.
Ms. Justice?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
No.
Mr. Wildebohr? And Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
All right. That motion carries. Next up is new business, which there is non-closed session, which I am informed is not necessary.
Wow. That's a first.
Well, then maybe we'll go through it then, if that's everyone. Just kidding.
We don't have a personnel report to vote on, since we have not met. Correspondence, is there anybody with correspondence? Mr. Wildebohr?
I'd like to share a couple. Additionally, I'd like to take a moment before I begin to address my comments made by my assistant a couple years ago. We've called the audience, we've spoken to them this evening. By name, there we go again, by name and say to you, you are the one who quotes Scripture and prays. Additionally, I would like to remind our fellow board members that we celebrated Constitution Day last month, which was outstanding. We also have to follow our North Carolina Constitution that we are required to follow. As with our federal constitution, which we all swore to uphold all parts, including both the First and Second Amendments, we are required to follow the state constitution, a brief reminder of the preamble and Article 6, Section 8. Section 8. First, our North Carolina Constitution preamble. "We, the people of North Carolina, gratefully grateful to Almighty God, the sovereign of ruler of nations, for the preservation of the American Union and existence of our civil, political, and religious liberties." ruler of nations, for the preserv, uh, persev, preservation of the American union and existence of our civil, political, and religious liberties, and acknowledging our dependence on Him for the continuance of the blessings and for our prosperity." And Article Six, Section Eight lists the reasons for disqualification from public office, and it says, "First, any person shall deny the being of Almighty God." I say that because there's been a lot of comments about a supposed Republican playbook from some of the board members. I will show you now the only playbook that I follow. Actually, got this from one of our county, assuming the city, uh, uh, city folks that is running for reelection to our city board. You know, I was never issued a Republican playbook, nor have I ever seen one. Now, the correspondence I referred to, we received this several times from one of our constituents outlining a post, which I do not, which I do totally understand is expect, is protected by the First Amendment, but I do not think it's wise, especially as we go after a bond, to speak of our current sitting president, whether you agree with him or not, saying he's okay, bloodied by one of his favorite high-powered rifles. Then, you know, when he was almost killed by an assassin's bullet. I must say that I'm deeply disappointed if a member of our board would say something like this. I don't have, don't understand how anyone could perceive attempted murder or murder as a positive result. Thank you.
Madam Chair? This is correspondence.
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
I would like to address correspondence that I have had and the entire board have had, and just mention a couple of the comments that I've received, that remarks by one or more board members have been indefensible, that most North Carolinians, North Ca, North Ca, North Carolinians share a sense of basic decency for a recently deceased person and their family, and that these remarks don't represent our values. These remarks display a lack of basic compassion for a deceased person and their families. Even when we disagree with them, it's not acceptable. It shows a lack of a moral authority. It shows that people are morally bankrupt and lack character. It's a public safety issue, and the responsibility that comes from holding public office would keep us from endangering anyone at any time. There are real world, real-world consequences for these kind of emails and social media posts and comments that are being said. They have gone too far. The climate that inflammatory rhetoric creates recklessness and, and endangers public safety, and I also deeply decry them. They're just totally, totally off limits for an elected official or any member of this board.
Ms. Justice?
Yes. I'd like to say that everybody up here goes online, except for maybe some people, and at least half the people up here, and have said very inflammatory things along party lines, and nobody, I'm not, I haven't sat up here and brought it up. I would like to say, Mr. Wildebohr, that comment that you read, Chair, excuse me, there, nobody, my colleague, that was done by somebody that wasn't even on the board, and that was picked out of a conversation that had nothing to do with the decline or wanting somebody to die. So, a lot of the stuff that we get is cherry-picked. It can be inflammatory. We're living in very difficult times. We do need to focus on, and I've been the one, probably more than anybody up here, has been saying that for years, that we need to focus on what's best for the kids. But on the other hand, when you have private emails and private conversations online, and people dox you, and I've been doxed, and then they accuse you that they're afraid of being doxed, I'm, all I got to say is, we got to take it all in context, understand that we're living in very unusual times, too. We've never had social media like this before, never. That's one of the reasons things are so inflamed. In fact, this is one of the things that's breaking my heart. You know, people are monetized to put this stuff online? They are actually being paid to inflame people? It doesn't have to be true. It just needs clicks. So, this is something that I think we do need to discuss further in the future, is the effects on social media and what we're trying to do up here and what's going on in the schools. It's huge.
Ms. Mason, if I have an...
Mr. Perry, and there's announcements still, so.
Just, and I'll try to be brief. I don't, I understand the sentiments of the correspondence that was lettered. I agree that, from what I read, that some of it is certainly what I would not consider civil or whatever. But that's my opinion. We all have our opinions. And to some extent, what are we going to do about it? We can sit here and police each other's social media posts all day long, or we can start working on what we need to work on. You know, we can encourage each other to maybe do a little bit better online and try to be much more civil. Let's talk about it in those terms as opposed to policing everybody. To be honest, there isn't much we could do, even if we all, everybody, if, if we could vote six to one against the person that, that we're talking about here, we still couldn't kick, kick that person off this board because that, they were voted in. And, you know, to, to waste our time, you know, trying to discuss and police our fellow board members on what they do online or what they say in an email somewhere, isn't time well spent. Let's concentrate on what we can do. Let's encourage each other. I hope our chair will encourage each other to do better job, to be more cognizant of what you said, of what we say online, so we can be more civil. Because I do think the tone in this country has become very uncivil, and we can't even have, seem to have seeming discussions without somebody else calling what you say hate speech. And I will remind my Republican colleagues that, you know, if we go down the road of calling everything we don't like as hate speech and trying to prohibit it, it may come the day when, when the other side decides that what we say is hate speech, and we could be on, on the other end of it. So, that is all I have to say.
I'm going to respond. Sorry. I have addressed individuals, several individuals on this board repeatedly about the manner in which they interact with community members. I have tried. It requires everyone to control their own actions. That's what it requires. It is not my responsibility to change the behavior of someone else. It is my responsibility to call it out, to remind everyone of why we are here. I go home to why I am here, and it angers me when I come across all of the things that I've seen. It's not just one board member, and I have called it out, and the difficulty for me is, I don't have a large portion of ability to consequence. And to be quite frank, I don't know if consequencing someone to death is going to be successful. I have appealed to the integrity of the individuals on this board, and I am met with resistance repeatedly. Mr. Wildebohr, go ahead, if you could close us out.
Yes, ma'am. Just, first off, I would like to point out that I didn't mention any board member by name, so, and I know that we had somebody that responded. And, and all I'm asking for is for us to improve in the, in the future. I mean, that, that's it. I mean, I, I would hope that we wouldn't say, you know, in my last, you know, what I said, I, and I'm not saying that anybody said that perceived murder or murder is a good thing, but I think it is something we need to really, you know, especially now, it's going to, it's only going to get worse in the next year, because it is election season, so everybody's going to be, you know, sparring. And I think what we've all said, which is true, we need to put, go back to thinking about what's best for kids by what we say, what we do, how we respond to our, each other, and how we respond to, to the community. And instead of, you know, yes, we, we all want our own party to get in, blah, 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 but I think we need to sit up here and, and, and every aspect of our lives, try to do our very best. You know, let's, let's try to think of, if, if my grandson was sitting in the room, you know, what would we want that person, or your grandson, or anybody's grandson, or son, or daughter, you know. So, I think that's, you know, I, you know, hopefully I can do better, and we can all do better. I'll leave it at that.
All right, I'm going to move on to announcements. Policy Committee meets Tuesday, October 14th at 1:00 PM here at the BOE. General public will have the opportunity to remote, option to review remotely on YouTube. Finance, Capital, and Bond, it's not listed on here correctly either. Finance, Capital, and Bond Committee will meet on Friday, October 17th at 12:30 here at the BOE. Curriculum Committee will meet, excuse me, Monday, October 27th at 4:30 at the BOE. Board of Education will hold an agenda review on Tuesday, October 28th at 2:00 PM here at the BOE. General public will have the option to view remotely on YouTube, and the Board of Ed will hold the October regular board meeting on Wednesday, I'm sorry, November twen, holy cow, I'm tired. November 5th at 5:00 here at the BOE. The general public will have the option to view remotely on YouTube. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yep.
Hey, we're out early.
We are adjourned.